Okay, good morning. We'll call the Tuesday, February 11th meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everyone. Rule of call, all three commissioners are present. Michelle Morris is present. Josh and I will be available by phone, should he be needed. Additions, deletions to the agenda. We will remove land development and replace that with Ridgeway Township nomination. Is that the only one?
Sheriff, sorry.
Oh, Sheriff had some payroll changes. We'll add Sheriff Wells under new business payroll changes. Anything I missed? Need a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion and additions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to both. Motion carries.
That was an aye for approved.
Yeah.
You go faster sometimes than my brain.
Okay, public comment. Anyone here for public comment? Is everybody on the agenda? I think everybody's on the agenda. Okay. New business, City of Burlingame, Patty Axon, local events.
Good morning. How are you guys doing?
Good morning.
I'm Patty Axon and this is Trisha Klein. And we're here to beg for money, just to say, not so lightly, we are. And we're representing the Burlingame Chamber of Commerce. And the Burlingame Chamber of Commerce puts on two events each year in the city of Burlingame. One of them is Burlingame Rodeo Days and the second one is Country Christmas. Rodeo Days has been around for more than fifty years and Country Christmas has been around for more than thirty years. As you know, the cost of putting these events on becomes very expensive. And we've put together a budget of the different activities we're wanting to do for this year. And with that being said, just to come up with the money for Rodeo Days, it's going to be about seven thousand dollars. Country Christmas, we're looking at, it's going to be about forty-six hundred dollars. So we're here to see if you, as the county commissioners, would be willing to help contribute some money to help sponsor these events. They're events that are enjoyed by everyone throughout the county, as well as surrounding counties. And we're here to see if you can help us with two thousand for a bit. We raised the rest of the money through donations. We also still boost space for our crafters and vendors. And we give the money back to the community. Last year, we had to gather donations for our carriage rides, which was enjoyed by everyone. And they've asked for us to have it back again at Rodeo Days. So that's about a thousand dollars just in itself. So that's why we're here. Is there any money at Trisha's?
Very good. I have personal experience with Rodeo Days, so I can confer. It's been better and better every year, thanks to you guys and all the hard work you do. I know we have kind of a budget for different events in the different towns. And I know we have a fair budget, so there's two separate ones. I asked Michelle to kind of look in a little bit. Were you able to find any information regarding the...
I didn't find a lot of specifics. I did get told that there is an old, old resolution. So I'm doing some work there.
So we're digging in to kind of see, because one of the other things we're going to have to talk about with, I think this will spark a conversation with the whole fair and everything that goes on in the community. But what are some of the events you guys have that you would like to have sponsored? What's some particulars?
Some of them, we're going to do a car show. We have our annual baby contest. That's a huge hit. We have the parade. We've already had several people wanting to participate in our parade this year. We will be having music on our stage in town. We're going to have Holman and the Haymakers and Bluebells. And we're wanting to do the carriage rides. We're wanting to do a petting zoo. And we're going to do a phone bus, but I've already got a sponsor for the phone bus for the kids where they run through this large mountain phone. And they just absolutely love it. The bar department's going to sponsor the water ball, where they shoot a water ball across with fire hoses and stuff. So that's going to be at no cost. The insurance for this special event, that's always kind of pricey, so we have to provide insurance. Advertising, and then we're wanting to get some banners to put up to sponsor the event. Kelly at PBT's in Osage has been really good at helping us with our banners. But that's kind of where we're going. As for Rodeo Days, Country Christmas, we don't do as much for Country Christmas. We do more of the carriage rides. We have the parade. We have the tour of homes. We have the craft vendors and everything at two buildings that are full of vendors. We, what else could I just say? Well, we want to do some music this year at Country Christmas.
We do Santa.
And we do Santa Claus, and he gives a little trick of joy to the kids.
And kids crafts.
And kids crafts.
Very good. Any thoughts?
It'd be nice to get good press. I'd put money into things like that.
Yeah, for sure.
I know the fair's an appropriated fund. I don't know that we have any particular fund for anything outside of that. Just thinking off the top of my head, not having a lot of time to process it. I would love to say yes to everything, but you just can't. I'm a little uncomfortable if a city is coming asking for county money to pay for city events.
Well, this is a change, not a city event, or a network.
Yeah, okay. I can see it opening doors for a lot of other organizations, you know, coming and doing the same thing. Another option would be, I know that the county attorney uses the diversion fund to support a lot of activities around the county.
We did reach out to them, and they use for their towards the after call.
I believe that we, as a commission, should start a fund for each, for each town that when they have these events, they could come, and it's just like the Fair Board Fund. It's appropriated fund. You're absolutely correct. And we have three fairs, kind of, it was set up as three, but there's two fairs specifically that are bigger, over broken Osage. And they will turn in their expenditures or invoices, and then we'll pay them out accordingly. And I think the fund is seventy-five hundred dollars is what would be set up for that. So one thing I would like to do too is set up a similar fund where the different towns can come and do the same situation, provide their invoices and whatnot, and they can be approved to have sponsorship of a certain amount. And I think that would kind of help with, you know, all the requests. I think that would help keep that in line anyway. That would be my advice.
So in the meantime, we're looking to see if we have a resolution on the books.
Yeah. We're kind of looking through it. If they wanted to present, get it in front of all of us, and then we can look in further and maybe set up a program moving forward. That way, it's not just a one-off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I like that better. Any thoughts on that otherwise? Okay, well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
If you, whatever you've got, if you can leave it with Michelle. So we have a record. That way, as we're looking to move forward, and then we can make a decision another day. Thank you. Treasurer Laura Hawkins, personnel status change, bond payment, bank documents. She in here?
She's not down here at least.
We can move to another one. I tell you, we have a lot of folks in here. I think for a certain one, let's just get down to business. Ridgeway Township nomination. Who would like to start? Who'd like to present? Mr. Shivelyn? The few folks? I would like for anybody to start with who is here supporting Mike Waller as the Ridgeway Township clerk. I would like for you to address the board first, and I will go last. How many folks do we have that would like to speak? Just asking. Four, five, six, four, three, four. Okay. I won't worry about a timeline with them, but just please keep it to the point. Sure, go ahead. Morning.
Good morning.
That's quite all right. It can be a little intimidating at times.
My name is Sheila Haller. I live at 11523 South Allos. This is it. In 2008, I moved from Topeka to Osage County in Ridgeway Township. I attended my first township meeting in 2021, not long after Mike Haller was elected to the Ridgeway Township Board. The reason for attending that meeting was because my husband had read about some past board meetings out of the local newspaper and suggested we go to see what the issue was. I questioned him about the article, and he explained to me that one of the newly-elected board members, Mike Haller, lived in the township but not on a township road. That anyone who lived in the township could run for the board, even if they lived in Little Carbondale. He then, oh, sorry. He said it was up to the commissioners to decide whether he could run for that board or not, which you guys did. And so there was nothing wrong with him running and winning. We went to the next meeting and still tried to make it to as many as possible. I'm sorry, I'm shaking. I couldn't believe what I heard or saw at that meeting. And I could not believe how some of the adults were acting and the comments they were saying. I didn't know any of the board members at that time, and I didn't know most of the people who were there. While trying to listen to the meeting, I kept hearing from some at the meeting saying things like, "You need to resign. You shouldn't be allowed to be on our board. Go back to your house on the lake. You don't know what you're talking about." It was embarrassing and very unnecessary. I finally said, "I want to say something." And was told that you can't call anyone out. I couldn't call anyone out because I didn't know anybody. And I'd never seen them, wait. I didn't know any of them and never seen most of them at any of the other meetings after that. There has been some very hateful comments on Facebook and some things about how Mike was questioned about something by a person at a meeting and was impressed, this is what was on Facebook, that they were impressed, when how the person asking the question was always prepared, looked things up, and printed off important information. Mike would listen to this person, thank him for bringing it to his attention, and that he would look into it. At the next meeting, Mike would address the question and would have all the information that was true, that it was true for the county roads, but not the township roads. But that would not be put on Facebook. It was always the negative. And it was because that person posted it, and that mean anyway? There have been more things on Facebook. Last year, there was a post about how the roads only got graded once after a snowstorm with the high winds. The roads didn't get a second pass after all the other roads were opened up. I appreciate the fact that my road was open with the one pass, then having to wait till all the other roads were done with two passes before my road was lined to it, and we devoted that road. Mike did a very good job while he was on the board. He made sure that the grader operator was and still is accountable for the time and the miles that he or she works. This made a big difference. I never got stuck again behind a grader, just sitting in one spot, to discover that the operator was asleep. While Mike was on the board, we don't have to wait till his road or all his friends' roads are open first because he's not on the township road. Since 2008, my husband had been trying to get our ditches cleaned out and the road fixed so that rain and or rainy snow actually ran off the road and into the ditches. Mike did make this happen during his four years on the board. Now, to be honest with you, the most important person in all this is not me. It are the three board members, is Josh Walker, our township grader operator. It's Josh Walker, oh, I'm sorry. I want to, I want the board, I want a board that keeps Josh on the job for as long as Josh wants it. A board that is willing to listen to each other and to work together, to put their personal opinions aside and make Ridgeway Township the top of the county as being a township that works together, to make it the best township of Osage County. Thank you. Thank you.
You did very well, no need to be nervous about that.
Totally shaking, sorry.
This gentleman's name, um, I forgot.
Brandon.
Brandon, is that his last name?
Yeah, Smith is his last name, but everybody's a Smith till they send. You gotta change your last name.
Mr. Smith, okay. Um, there's controversy going on in township. And there's lots of reasons for that. And I'm not really going to get into that. What I'm concerned about is the process of their responsibility in this situation. I tuned into the last meeting and watched it move from, you guys seem to be concerned with what voters wanted. And who was voted and why they, and who wasn't voted. I do want to point out that we have county governments and we have township governments. And they're two separate things, but they kind of depend on one another. What we have right now is a person that is totally capable, and I've had four years, watched this on, I think I've missed one or two meetings at the most. And watch the degree of professionalism. And probably more important, the fact that we get elected into these offices and we're not professionals. So we have a lot of amateurs running governments. And we learn as we go along. Townships are kind of notorious for people really not, as long as their road is okay, they can get through, they largely ignore it. It's only when you have extreme problems that you rile up the constituency to come out and complain. One of the things that happened, happens, I think, on, on governments that run rather loosely, is that it becomes a point of people getting familiar with one another, comfortable with the way things are. And so it goes on. Think largely the roads that are the worst. And that's not because of the maintenance or any outage, it's largely just geographic. I have said in the past that some of these roads probably shouldn't have been built in the first place. They're hard to maintain. What I see happens is that the people that can get through, get to work on it on a normal basis, they largely ignore things. It's the people that have lived on basically the problem roads that gravitate naturally toward running for boards so that they can get their roads maintained the way they would like. I think that's kind of what's happened in this situation. Now, we have people with all good intentions that want to do what's right. What I see is a lot of times it's just flying by instinct. They ignore some rules and regulations that are laid down by the state. And they may not even know it. But you get kind of the, dare I say, good old boy network and everybody gets comfortable with one another and you end up with things kind of going along rather loosey-goosey. And then someone comes along and says, you know, things aren't being followed and taxes are getting awfully high and, like, oh, we ought to do something about this. So they run, they get elected, and that's what I saw with Michael Lawler. And Mike is a stickler for details. And so he gets in there and something doesn't seem right, he drills down. He become, he, he's become an amateur and on his own volition, learned the rules and regulations and brought them to, to bear. Now, he's not the most actual person in the world, so maybe he rubbed some people wrong. But the fact of the matter is, is he's bringing a degree of professionalism into the township government that largely is not there. I think, me personally, from what I've seen, Ridgeway Township should be held high for the degree of professionalism that exists today. So, there's one thing I want to point out about this. You guys kind of seem like, man, I don't want to make a decision on this because we're going to get yelled at if we make the wrong one or the unpopular one. Well, let me point out to you that in Ridgeway Township, there wasn't one voter in Ridgeway Township that voted for either of you two gentlemen. We weren't allowed. So, basically, one thing about public offices is that if you do something wrong, you're held accountable. If you, and it should be that way. With you guys not being, for us constituents of Ridgeway Township, not having the opportunity to vote for either one of you guys, we're sitting here saying, where's the accountability? And we've got this deal here right now, this situation in which Heather was voted for the second time, Jim Shockley was voted for the second time. They, in effect, were given the authority by the voters to make decisions. Elections are over, we don't have a, we don't want a, the township clerk, is it, she resigned, now it's got to be filled. Heather recommended, Jim Shockley recommended. That, in effect, I think should be the weighing mandate. Because voters, in effect, trust them to make this kind of decision. Now, you guys hesitated about this, and I can see why. You weren't at any of those meetings that I've ever remembered. We had a situation there. It's a little bit controversial. But the voters of Ridgeway Township voted the people in the office that makes these decisions and trust that their judgment is going to be satisfactory.
I'd offer you some water, but I've been drinking it and it seems like nothing.
I would, I, I would question the wisdom if you guys get overly involved in township business. I understand why you have the authority. If the township would get so out of control that it couldn't be figured out amongst themselves, yes. But we, we have a, a procedure for just exactly this situation. And it's the authority that commissioner from that district and the, and the township trustee made the decision and thought that Michael Lawler would be the best choice. I agree with that because of what I have witnessed. Like I said, the degree of professionalism, it's just outstanding, especially at the township level. So I would encourage both of you to trust your, your other commissioners' judgment on this and realize that the situation was reversed and the voters of Ridgeway Township were trying to interfere with another township's that maybe you represent. How would you want Heather to behave? Well, how much?
I, I would want her, in retort to your thing, and I'll say this publicly, I've said it a hundred times, I would want her to behave just the way I behaved. Because I believe that if you have a situation and such, and I'm not saying that this happened, but I will explain again why I said what I said. So say you have someone that lost an election and two other people that won, and they're all in the same group. So say a few of those folks or constituents or whatever pushed to run this person out and succeeded. And then they were able to just sit the person that they wanted, even though the person lost the election. I'm not saying that happened, but we all know it happens. It happens everywhere, it happens in every form of government. And that's why we have checks and balances. That's why much wiser people than myself put these types of things into place. So from my standpoint, I would expect these two to treat the situation just as I treated it and not necessarily take me at my word fully. I would like them to look into it, just like we did here. I would like them to entertain five folks just like yourselves, so you can speak up. Because in retort to what you stated when Mr. Shively was here last time, there wasn't too many people to speak on the other behalf or even too many to speak on Mr. Lawler's behalf. So I'm not upset with the way this happened and I do appreciate, you know, your, your sentiments exactly. But in retort, the short answer is, I would expect them to act just as I did, treat it the same way. That, I, to me, that's just the fairer way. And I'm not a smart guy, I just listen to them.
So what I see now is, is a, you have two choices. You can accept the recommendations from two people that have been elected to represent Ridgeway Township's constituency. And the, the worst-case scenario on, on that outcome would be that this is, is going to be, this election disappointment is going to be only a two-year appointment. The election will come around in two years. And at that point in time, if Mike Lawler turns out to be the atrocious candidate that some of the, uh, people are warning against, then they have an opportunity at that time to replace that candidate. Now, the, the other choice is what? Not to, uh, uh, accept this recommendation? And then my question is, is what then? The elections have been held. Now, to your point, Mike Lawler did not run for trustee. He ran for treasurer and he was defeated by another candidate, which I don't believe is here, that at this point in time is, has stated that he's not for Mike Lawler being tre, being appointed as clerk. I said, what's next? Now, my, I think you'll hear from other people, Mike Lawler, I don't think that you can find a better position, better clerk, Mike Lawler, to fill that position. I don't think there's another person that has a little kind of qualification, attention to detail. He, he's done some extremely good records keeping. And in, in any kind of government, you have to keep good records so that you know where you've been, so that you make an analysis of where you're going to go. And I think Mike would do nothing but make that process way more streamlined and also efficient, which means that our taxes are staying lower, which Mike has held the revenue neutral for four years. So, that's my hope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to be next?
Sure.
Come on up. And I'm sorry, sir, would you repeat your names, please?
All be passed, Paul.
All be passed.
Steven Gibbs. Oh, I put my name in a hat for the clerk position for the township. And, uh, could you guys, township, you're the clerk. So, I lived in the township nearly all my life. And, uh, I think it'd be a good option for the township clerk. And, uh, so I'll throw my name in the hat. You guys consider what to do on this deal? And, uh, I don't know what else to put in there for, uh, just getting another fresh person in there and not to recycle, recycle the, you know, good old boy system that they get going on there, what they want to keep going on. So, I think I could be one of everybody. Do a good job to township people. So, that's, uh, just another option for you guys. Got any questions?
Do you have any for or against on, on Mr. Lawler?
Against.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't like the way it was run the last four years.
Okay.
So, yeah, I had to vote for him at all. So, that's all.
Very good, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone?
I would like to say something, and it's just a statement, I don't live in Ridgeway Township, but I'm a treasurer of another township. And when Mike was elected to trustee four years ago, I bet on us, his first time on township, he came and visited our township to see how things were ran, what needed, you know. He really bailed into the position and took it responsibly. So, I just want to put that out there that he did. And, uh, I've been on the board, um, seventeen, eighteen years now, and that has never happened for somebody who's from another township to come and,
Yeah.
and do the, do the diligence of the job.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I forgot someone. I forgot to turn my page. And that is that our township roads are better now than they were fifteen years ago or even six years ago. Yeah, there, there is more than can be done to them. I mean, that's just a given because of weather and everything. But I believe that with Mike on our board, that Ridgeway Township Board could continue to move forward to keep our, to make our roads better. And because I know, I know Mike lives about a half a year, that stuff, but I'm interested in two thousand and eight, so that was another thing. I think with keeping, you know, with Mike being on our board, that our board could work together and it may be accomplished even more. So, that's it, thank you, I'm sorry.
That's your phone. Quick.
Sheila is a school bus driver that drives those roads twice a day every day.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, and I'm, I'm going to say this, that there are times, you know, that, a lot of times where our township roads here lately have been better than the county road, that I have to travel. So, you know, sorry, but, and there's another township that I drive in that they, I know they've gotten, I believe, a new person working there because I have, they're, can you go around my bus now? And it has been a lot better than it was in the past, than it was last year, so. And he told me to, you, you know, you're part of it, you let me know, I'll make sure that it gets taken care of and stuff, all with everything. But yeah, but yeah, we, our, our roads have been a lot better earlier days and stuff.
Good.
Josh is a good guy. Josh is a good guy.
I don't have a prepared speech and I should, but I just wanna comment that I've been on boards of commissions since the nineteen seventies. And it's always breath of fresh air when I work with someone that is professional and is not on the board with an axe to grind or has a friend that said this and said that, but to have a position. I met Sheila at one of the township meetings when they were so much controversial. I could not believe the decorum of yelling and shouting at two or, I don't know how like just how it may be there. But, um, and unfortunately, we had one member on the board that was a popularity contest more than thinking about business. In fact, I think the one that's sitting on there now, Don June, that was elected by a clerk in Carbondale, they don't look out. In particular, one township meeting when I asked the clerk then for minutes of a past meeting, he didn't take minutes. I don't think he, well, he did take one set of minutes. And he yelled at me that, "I came busy." Well, gee, that's your job. He takes minutes. And he never did the minutes through the time that he was on the board before he gave up and went down. Mike had taken minutes and minutes were reconstructed for his goods because the clerk. So, I just wanna say that Mike is a breath of fresh air. He is professional. He'll do the right thing, which is all I want anybody on the board of commission to do. That's why I got involved in it fifty years ago because, hey, that's not right. Kid, you know, just do it right and square. Mike will do it right and square. Unless, no, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, I spoke last.
Ladies first, sir.
I spoke last week. I didn't have to bore you, but I completely wanted a refresher. This week, you know where I said, or if I said this, you're gonna remember.
I remember, but would you guys like it?
I,
You're good?
I'm good, thank you, though.
I was watching on Zoom and I do remember how it breaks.
Yes. It was never a break.
Sir?
Well, things have really changed a lot. Other than Jay Wolf is now the treasurer. And the books are a mess. And the gentleman is, wants to be a clerk is the one who made those books a mess. He's visiting with Jim Shively about it. He showed Jim Shively what's wrong. And this is, you know, he, if Mike would just stayed doing what his job was as trustee, to run the township, let the other two people do their job, but he had to micromanage everything. And there's some things I agree need to be done better. But he also went over hedge on, or right back to doing the same thing that Jim was doing, the same thing that Mike did. We haul off and don't braid the reds. The potholes are still there. They're just covered with rock. And now they're bouncing out, so you're right back to, I, you know, it comes down to the election. If this is such a good, tight team, as Jim Shively has said, that they're just all look great together, then why didn't Mike run for trustee? And Jim stay on the clerk for another two years? And Edie run for treasurer, that they were such a great team? Evidently, they weren't as great a team as they want to think they are. Because otherwise, there wouldn't be the turmoil. It's, Rex and Sheila get fairly more treatment than anybody else because it's a good old boy system now. If you're, if you're okay with Mike, he can take care of it. I fed my road graded one time. And that decent job of, and that's Josh. But he's, all the ground is still in the ditch and at this year. And that's one of the things he's gonna take care of, is he's gonna clean the ditch and put the rock on ready. He needs a leadership of somebody that does head to dead rates. And Jay Wolf, the treasurer, has built roads all the way country. And he can tell him how to build roads. We've had talks with Josh, Jay and I both have. And that's not what he's being told how to do by the leadership of Mike's hour. And it's gonna be the same now with Jim. Because Jim's gonna worry about mainly one thing, like it has been since this all started. Little Ben's gets all the money. That has had more money spent on that three and a half miles of road than the other three and a half miles in the whole Ben Township. And these people can say that, oh, you guys had favorite children, you know. I graded all the roads in the township, all of them. And I graded them all the time. Well, according to Mike, I was out just doing, as he called it, grading the roads for leisure. But we've got, we've got, now, the last two grader operators, they've had several, including Jim Shively, including Sheila's husband Rex, that did not have a clue, but they jumped on there from, now, just not something to do, those who men in three hundred thousand dollars used to cook of the townships. And say they are, no. There's more dirt on the road then and pollen aside. But, I mean, just like Heather, Heather got all brand-new rock down there this last week. But guess what? They didn't grader it today, Heather.
I have no idea.
Well, you can't tell if your roads have been grader, Heather?
Well, there is gravel, yes.
But I said, has it been gradered?
I don't know.
Heather, to be honest, you're a commissioner, you are a commissioner up there. Has it been gradered?
I do not know. There is, there is fresh gravel.
I see how this goes. Thank you very much.
Sir. Okay, well, the hard part, is there any, anyone that hasn't spoken? Okay, Jeff. We will not be here. Amen, amen. Yeah, no, what this is, what I'm gonna show you is, what this is, that's what I was handed. You know what he was handed? Nothing. Get rid of him and have her do it all. That's, what he was handed was nothing. This is what I was handed. This is all the documentation. That's just a part of what I'm gonna talk about today. But I wanna start out with, I wanna talk about, I did get notice that there were two, uh, people been arrested in the clerk position other than Mike. Uh, one of those people I never could get a hold of and never called me back. I texted, I called, they never called me back. I did interview Mr. Gibbs. Uh, Steve and I have known each other for, since I was a teenager, because he and I hate for his dad. So, I like Steve. I think Steve's a great guy. Um, and I did basically interview Steve. I did ask him questions. I'm not gonna go through all of those questions. But just what I'm looking for is someone who can do that job and that job. Okay? So, I wanna pick, and I don't, uh, see, I don't have a problem with that. I like Steve. But I'm looking for the qualifications to move this board forward as I need, because I don't have him. Right? So, um, I, I did, I did talk to Steve after I interviewed him, when I was on the phone with him. Literally, two minutes after I was on the phone with him, our employee, Josh Walker, called me and I didn't take the call because I was talking to Steve. I called him back and Josh, he and Mr. Gibbs had a conversation right before I talked to Steve, not knowing. And the F-bomb was used quite a bit on what Josh, Josh was mowing trees and Steve didn't like it. And Josh said this could be, could have been handled so much better than F this tractor, F this mower, F this, F that. I'm not gonna repeat all, everything that was said, but not very appropriate for a person who's trying to get on the board and is going to be basically a board member of that employee. Okay, so, enough about that. Uh, so, what I wanna show you guys now, um, and I have them in order, so if you wanna unpaper clip them. What I'm gonna show you is the meeting minutes before Mike got on the board. There you go, sorry. So, these are the meeting minutes before Mike got on the board. Um, and specifically, the very first one I gave you, um, there was a budget hearing and it started at eight oh two PM, as you can see, that's highlighted, with Jay Wolf Treasurer and Daniel Gasman. And I, and I highlighted the things that I want you to look at. The mill increase was due to cost of rocks and machine cost increase for repairs. So, um, I highlighted that because I think it's important, okay? Uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that in a little bit. So, there were no, since he said that there were, uh, okay, so now, let's go to, um, the budget hearing was open and announced that the notice was posted in home records. The mill increase was due to cost of rocks and machinery. No one, with no one present to ask questions, do you see where that's highlighted in yellow? No one was present to ask questions. These were the notes from the clerk, okay? Now, I want you to go to the next page. As you can see, the date is August one, two, three, twenty twenty. Obviously, that's a typo, but whatever. Um, and the meeting was held at eight sixteen PM. So, the other meeting on the first page ended at eight fifteen. This meeting started at eight sixteen, so it was one meeting right after the other. And it said others in attendance, as highlighted, were Claude Stadler and Mike Lawler. Did they not show up for the first meeting? And they showed up right, because remember, he said that there was no, no one else there. And then he said there was two people there at the very next meeting, a minute later. So, that's just kinda like, what? So, anyway, now go to sheet three. October eighth, twenty twenty. I highlighted in yellow, and I will read the meeting minutes. There was no meeting held for the township due to not being able to have two board members present to hold a, to hold a quorum. Jay and Daniel met only to sign checks. Well, I'm sure this board knows that. That is illegal. You can't have two board members meet and sign checks. And it says to pay bills and have a treasurer report at November meeting. And then it says a notice was placed in the local newspaper to reflect no meeting. There was no notice. We looked it up. No notice. This did not happen. So, these two board members immediately got together to meet and sign checks. That's illegal. Now, how do you think I know all that information?
I know.
Mike Lawler. Because he knows how to look up statutes. That's how this board was ran before. Now, go past those three sheets and look at the next three, okay? The next three sheets are the meeting minutes that we have not approved yet, but these are the ones that I've written up for the next three meetings. This is how I write the meeting minutes. Can you tell the difference between those beginning meeting minutes and the ones that I write? There's a reason for this. A lot of us who the leadership of Mike want, hey, we need to document things better. We need to talk about things, so you can see the difference. Now, let's really get down to what else is important. Look at the last two pages, the last two pages, okay? This is the annual report for Ridgeway Township as of December thirty first, twenty twenty one. We started January first of twenty twenty two with twenty seven thousand five hundred fifty nine dollars. Now, I want you to look at the last page that I presented. This is the report that I just did this last January. We have now a hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars in Ridgeway Township's fund already. That is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollar increase in the amount of money that we now have that can spend on gravel that's needed. We did not have that before. Why do you think that happened? It's because of what he did the last four years. May I add, we had this money with no tax increases, zero, zero tax increases. He was able to accomplish that because of the things that he did. I got on the board two and a half years ago. I was part of it as well. We've got a new tractor. We've got two new mowers. We've got more gravel put down on the roads than ever before. And he's got it documented. We can go back and tell you where every load of gravel, not speculation, but actual spreadsheets that he would, if I'm right, hand out at the meetings to constituents to say, this is where the gravel's been. This is what we've put down. Now, I am here again to recommend Mike Lawler on the basis that I've been a two-time elected official, as Paul B. Passwall had pointed out. And I've seen it. I've been there. I've witnessed it, not hearsay. Not somebody coming up and telling me like Sheila had heard things about, oh, Mike Lawler's this, Mike Lawler's that. I have personally seen it. So, with the things that I have seen, this is why I'm wanting to bring him on to the board. It's not the good old boy system. It's about building the team that's gonna help move and continue to move this township forward. He is my Josh Nye and he's gonna be my Michelle Morris. He's on three other boards. He's on a church board. He's on an association board. And he was elected as treasurer of the OSH County Republican Party. So, with all the qualifications plus the recommendations of a commissioner that is a two-time elected official in our township, I'm a two-time elected official. I believe we're both on the same page. To move forward, I need Mike Lawler on the board because he does things I don't wanna do. I don't wanna do this job. I don't wanna look up statutes, as you can see, that I gave you, how they did things illegally. We don't do that stuff anymore. If we do, we fix it. And, you know, like, everybody makes mistakes, right? Everybody makes mistakes. We have found Mr. Stadler do a lot of illegal stuff. We didn't prosecute him. We weren't gonna take that path because it's probably not the right thing to do. We're trying to work for our constituents to put as much gravel on the roads as we can. And that's why Mike Lawler has got to be on this board to help us continue to move forward with that. So, that's my recommendation. Do the commissioners have any questions for me? At this time?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Les? Yes, sir.
Hey, I have one thing. Jim just said something I was not even aware of that they've done that. They have completed the financial records for twenty twenty four. Both him and Jay Wolf have signed off on those records. So, it was said earlier that there were some problems with books for twenty twenty four, but Jay and Jim have both signed off on those records now. And I think they've submitted the county clerk for these types of stuff, Mr. Lawler. So, thank you for doing that.
Okay, are there any other comments? Anyone else like to speak?
No, I'd like to, that is a fashion of being, the confrontation with his operator is that they have no transparency. They don't come up and say, hey, we're gonna put your own these trees right across from your, when you walk out your door, so it just looks like they have. They don't come up and say, hey, we're going to butcher all these trees right across your, when you walk out your door, so it just looks like they have. And that's what they got with the rotary axe on scene. And, you know, they don't know how, they don't, I guess they probably don't have a chainsaw, you know? And, and those trees have been there for dust control, start the road. All they want to do is butcher them down, so, but that's why they were put there was for dust control on the deal. And they just want to take this rotary axe and go down there and just splinter them up a little bit to maybe get five foot of sideways. I don't know what their logic is. But they don't come around to ask anybody, they don't tell anybody, they don't do nothing, they just send their operator out. They just butcher up whatever you think you need to do. And without checking with the landowner to see, you know, they had stopped a couple of times. I've caught them grinding up little plum bushes right next to, you know, tree that bit around them. You know, balking, makes no sense. A lot of stuff they did made no sense.
Hi, Addison.
Briefly, because we're getting ready to ask for formal nomination and then.
With his, with his statement also, like it was brought up, I do drive a school bus. I appreciate when those trees are trimmed back away from the road as we're driving down the road. And I would think most of the people with vehicles appreciate it also. Now whether it was done the correct way or not, I don't know, but I drive past his house several times a day. And I even worked this morning and I thought, you know, I don't believe that what Josh trimmed that day was cedar trees, I think it was just some brush that was.
I stopped him before he got to my tree.
Okay, well.
Okay, well, I think, I think, in my opinion, and maybe you two might have some more questions or whatnot, but I think we've allowed everyone to speak fairly. And I think we need to move on this at this time. Do you agree?
Yes, sir.
You agree? So what I'll ask for is, we have Jim Lawler and we have.
Mike Lawler, sorry.
Sorry, Mike Lawler, I'm sorry. And then we have Steve Gibbs as the two nomination. So I have a formal nomination from you guys for Mike Lawler. You have a formal nomination from you guys for Steve. So I'll need a motion to approve the appointment of, we'll start with Mike Lawler.
I would move to approve, to appoint Mike Lawler to the Ridgeway Township Clerk position.
This is to fulfill a two-year term?
Yes. Unexpired term.
Unexpired term.
So Jim moved into the trustee position.
Will? Has she made the motion?
Yep, we have a motion to approve the appointment of Mike Lawler.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Jim Lawler, you have been appointed to.
Mike.
I don't know why I keep calling you Jim, it's because I got to look at his mug, I guess. Mike, I apologize for that, congratulations, you have been appointed to Ridgeway. And thank you guys for coming and thank you for bringing in your.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And we haven't heard anything out of Lawrence. And Jackie, you were so good to show up. Well, yeah, you got an issue with that, let Jackie come on up. You were ahead of her in the line here, so I just wanted to make sure.
Did you go upstairs and take a look at the box?
I can't, well, it's obviously commissioners as part of the roster complete.
Do you guys, before we get started and speaking of that, then I need a recess?
Are you looking for an excuse, are you okay?
No, I'm good. I will make sure I'm being, you know, accommodating.
Oh, I'll let you know.
Good morning, William.
Good morning. I have a purchase order, hopefully, I haven't filled it out yet, for replacement of the vaccine that we lost due to the ice storm. It's a large one. To replace what we lost, the total will be thirty three thousand five hundred ninety-four thousand for the expense.
Do we, do we know if K. Camper liability carried?
I have asked and we haven't gotten the answer yet. I have questions that you have the answer to fill in, okay?
But it is something we can put in as a claim? Or you're going to try? Okay. I would, to me.
I, I would think it would be a covered entity because it's, you know.
It should be, I just don't know if vaccines are covered. Now, my bigger question and part of this discussion is, is this generator discussion. That's, I don't want to care. Because that, we're spending, getting raised to thirty three thousand dollars to replace those vaccines, and I feel, you know, we could have diverted that.
The generator, I had a person from Holy come down and.
You have got Generac is what's, what you have?
There is a Generac on the right now. And the person who came out from Holy gave us a quote. There are two different generators, they're basically the same price, they're like a thousand dollars difference on price. And it's about thirty seven thousand dollars to replace, I shouldn't say replace, to put a different generator in. Plus thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to the electrical per there person. Which honestly, as much trouble as we've had with this last one, I would have whoever they're doing electrical for generators do it. Because wiring for a generator is completely different.
Well, there's going to be.
And I think that's part of the problem that's happened.
There's going to be a point where they stop and someone else is going to take over, so. Just have to make sure we coordinate that, because they'll, they're going to install it so far.
I'm gonna, I missed, I think, the first part of your statement.
Which part?
Did you say we need to replace the current generator?
Yes.
Which is not very old, because I remember we got that, I think with COVID money.
It was not, it was not the generator that, because I was never in, that's not the generator that I was wanting to get. But one of the commissioners at the time kind of took that and did it.
So is it not salvageable, like, is it just broken?
We could make you a heck of a deal. Yeah.
No, the generator, there's nothing technically wrong with the generator, from what I understand. It's the way that it cycles because of the electricity goes off and then comes back on and then goes off again. The generator cycles on, then turns off, but then will cycle back on. And that happens pretty frequently. Luckily, most of the time it doesn't happen. We've been there, or the electricity has come back off.
I'm really surprised, that's it, I'm a little. If that's going to be. Is there no one to?
My storm.
And it's only thirty K.
And so that is. So, we could use that generator as sort of a county. We could utilize it, say, with something that is a warming shelter or some other emergency preparedness type place in the county. Where it could be utilized as a generator for a building, like a community center, I don't know if they have a generator or not. But that is someplace that if we needed to use that facility in an emergency, you could have a generator there. Now, I don't know what county it's not, but they even want to do that. It's just this question, to look at other uses of the county that would benefit.
Yeah, from my experience, the Generac's not what you'd call like a commercial industrial type of unit, it's more of a homeowner model. And like, I think if I remember this right, nobody was there when the power went down. And so nobody knew that the generator wasn't running, right?
For this?
Yeah.
No, I went there.
Oh, you did?
I went there for two hours in the ice storm.
Oh, okay.
And got there.
Tried to get it going?
I couldn't get to the generator because of the ice. I went inside and, and we have a protocol for this, a protocol vaccine. But because of the ice storm, I couldn't get back in to remove the vaccine and put it back in the refrigerator when the electricity.
Yeah.
Well, you shouldn't even have that process. I mean, it really, in all fairness, you shouldn't even have it in that situation.
I mean, a generator is meant for emergencies. So everything she's saying, I remember these episodes of the last three or four years, so I'm, I hear everything you're saying, I agree with you. My question is, can we not salvage what we have? Or is it just, is it the wrong one? Or was it not, is it not installed right?
I'd say it'd be the wrong one for that application is what my understanding, my limited knowledge of Generac.
Probably something with the, it probably needs to be run in a manual auto kick on.
It needs to be in a position, right?
Yeah.
One of the cats to sign for, it needs to be a manual switch, that way, like if we had something like that in the shop, shop or something, you go there, blow the switch, you have a power in a shop.
Yeah.
Thirty three thousand dollars, that's where you're letting them go.
Yeah, the homeowners that I know that have them, when the power fluctuates like that, they don't function for them either very well.
Yeah, we have one outside of town, they have the same problem. And that's what you and I had visited about this long time ago. They had somebody there supposedly to fix the switch and.
It's, it's been an ongoing.
Yeah.
I mean, it has been ongoing from the time it's been installed, which I think I understand to be about three to four years.
So will any of our, any of your grant cover any of this?
Right now, none of my current grants work. I asked on the largest grant I have, I asked for it, and it will not cover even that particular grant. My regular state grants, I mean, our total grants that we give are around thirty five, forty thousand dollars. And that's for all of them. I mean, our immunization grant's only forty five hundred right here. And, you know, we can't use it to pay for the vaccine. There is another grant that I'm looking into, I don't know if it will or not. I can write for it, it's due next month. I figured I could write for it and see if they approved it, if they don't, they don't. But that's the only other one that I know.
So is that something that is of value to sell to an appropriate entity, person, business?
Yeah, we can put it up for sale, or like we're saying, there's somewhere in that, within our county that it could probably be amused. But like Ryan was saying, it needs to be set up in a manual turn-on situation. So say we have this issue at Run Bridge and they need to come in, their computers are down or something, they can just go manually turn it on. But you already have backup, don't you?
I don't know, I was aware. I know what, I mean, it was originally written for one like this, but I don't know what they did.
It's probably the.
I think it was just.
Just. It happens all the time, that'll happen.
Not including this.
I think we need to make sure, just with Michelle, our capital improvement fund?
Yeah.
There would be plenty to pay for that, because you don't have a capital improvement in the health department.
No, but.
You have the general.
I was going to ask you, do you know?
Right.
I know the, I know the health department with a lot of your grant reimbursements, sometimes your cash balance builds up. That could be the other option, is we could see if there's enough cash balance just to pay it out of the.
If there was something, or we can even use some of it.
Matching funds or something, yeah.
Right, that we can move some of that over at some particular time and maybe pay for it out of the fund and then replace it out of the health department when it looks like the vaccine. And like I said, I'm looking into another grant to see if we can get it, if not, Holy, partially.
So do you need a full on, do you need to write it up for that?
For the immunization, I have one, I don't have one for.
Well, I need one, we'll need one for that.
Okay, do you have a?
Because this can't happen, this is second year in a row, is correct?
Uh, no.
It did happen.
It has happened, but not.
Not last year, I thought.
I don't know about last year, but I know it happened.
I guess it's been for three years.
I think it's my first year, because I remember, one of the reasons we had that conversation.
It literally makes me sick, like, I'm just like fifty five, sixty thousand dollars. Not saying it's not warranted, it's just, that stinks. And where's this out of? I missed, like, my eyes, like, I heard this and then I didn't hear anything else, I just was sick for doing this. Oh, my gosh.
That's where we would take it from, and then Jackie could reimburse the capital improvement if she gives a grant. It'd be transferred from her apartment to the capital improvement fund.
And Mrs. Foley out of Tepeka?
Yeah.
And what type, okay, so what type of warranty or what type, how do we prevent this?
That's why, that's why CAPS people will be hooking it up, because then that'll help the warranty and the.
They will also.
Service plan?
Do the service. If I can get a grant, I will write into the grant for at least a one-year service.
Yeah.
Depending on how much we can put in, I'm going to try and.
Yeah, I mean, there's things that our, our guys can do, but it's to maintain the serviceability of an emergency equipment, you really ought to have official PM done once a year. And then a load testing done at least every two years to make sure everything's good. And I think that's at least minimum, you know?
So this says it's including a new automatic transfer switch.
Yeah.
Is that something we don't have? Or is that in addition to this?
It would, I don't know what you got there currently, but it would prevent you from having to go down there and manually flip a switch. You don't want to charge the grid, you want to just charge the building, so.
So would you prefer I do the CAP or the other one, where like I say, there's like a thousand dollars.
Are there's two quotes?
I just seen the one.
It's on that first page.
She's got two lines, there's one.
Oh, okay, I thought you had.
They're two different generators, but they're on the same.
The forty K, that would be, in my opinion.
And that's the CAP, right?
Because we want to be able to run, that would run your building, not just.
And the coffee pot.
And the coffee pot. Maybe, what we're saying. I just want to make sure we've got the size that is needed for that building. And it's sensitive, we can't pay thirty four thousand dollars every year.
No. Yeah, or a trip to Breaker or whatever.
Or someone would make coffee.
Yeah.
Here we are. Right to.
So for you guys that speak this language, is the warranty in here and does it cover this situation if we had it again with them?
Cover this situation.
Whatever we've currently had, if something.
They're not going to cover the loss of the vaccines.
I'm not meaning the previous situation, I'm saying next snowstorm.
It don't work.
If something happens and it doesn't work, like, if we didn't, if we didn't have a warranty that covered it with the current one, do we have a warranty that covers?
I think it's kind of like if your refrigerator's under warranty and it goes out, it covers the refrigerator, but they're not going to replace your food.
Right.
Okay. Oh, my gosh.
Well, and I would, with writing up this PO for that one, make sure you get the warranty right up. Because they should provide that too.
And I read something in there, and again, I don't speak this language, but it did talk about the gas line. And I remember one of the issues was supposedly, one of the reasons this didn't work is because the gas line wasn't big enough. Was that true, or did we get the gas line fixed to where it's a bigger gas?
The gas line was fixed.
And it's a larger capacity?
I mean, honestly, I wasn't here when that happened.
I know.
I just know that it was completed because I went through and found the invoice thing in the receipts. What that means.
That's very great of them.
The whole thing, I had.
So when they came down and did their quote, do we have everything we need for them to hook this up? Or are they having to, like, is it, do we have the utilities and what they need for this?
That's what the electrical bid is for.
So the thirteen thousand, the install is adding.
On top of.
It's not just installing it, there are other things they're having to add.
Yes, because, no, it's the electrical person made a bid as a subcontractor under Holy. It's who they use to do their installation.
And so?
Somebody will install the unit and then somebody will hook the unit up.
So when something goes wrong, who's coming out to fix it?
CAPS maintenance people. That's where she's going to get a maintenance agreement and all that stuff to come back with PO.
Yeah, we'll look at it, there'll be a.
Service contract.
Service contract.
There will be a warranty on the equipment. Then you will get a service contract, it's kind of like a printer, your printer units, you can buy a service contract for your printer units. And then the company that installed your copier, your printer comes out whenever you need them. And there's different types of service contracts. This one would be a service contract where they would come, will come out, I'm going to guess it's quarterly, that they come out and they test the equipment. This one would be a service contract where they were comfortable come out, I'm going to guess it's quarterly, that they come out and they test the equipment. They load test it, they do everything that they're supposed to do, make sure it's going to work the way it does. You pay for that usually annually. And what I would do if this grant will cover this is I would write the grant to cover all of this as well as, depending on how much money we get in the grant, at least a one-year service agreement. If I can get more out of it, if we get enough money, I'll try and get at least two. But it's just going to be kind of the only.
Can we get, you don't have the service agreement yet?
No.
Yeah, that's just generic.
All this is, all this is right now, it's just, he's just given us a bid. Uh, this is the first that I've had all of the numbers to be.
First tip. First tip, and it outlines the standard warranty, twenty-four months, thousand hours.
It's for what?
Twenty-four months, thousand hours. That's the standard.
Okay.
So they probably will more quote you.
Yeah, it might be along with a service contract. It might be an extension. I don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, I don't know either. I know Foley does come out and do their maintenance and stuff, but from what I understand is it's, it's a contract that you pay for annually. Or whatever, because if the equipment can be fifteen years old and they still.
Did they give a price range on that? On the service agreement?
I haven't asked them yet.
They should be able to give you some when you ask, yeah.
They've been doing that for.
So can we wait for those other documents to?
Yeah.
Well, we're, yeah, we're just telling her to move forward with getting that.
Getting the rest of the document, okay. I need to tell.
Do you want me to do a purchase order for this yet or you want me to?
No, you're gonna have, yeah, we want, it needs to be a formal PO with the service agreement, the installation, the turnkey cost.
All about the twelve thousand. I also. I also will go forward with the grant and see if we can do that.
Yeah.
I won't know about that for a little while yet. The grant, I think, is due March seventeenth.
Well, like we were saying earlier.
I'm sorry, my head's.
We pay for this, our capital improvement, and then you get the grant reimbursement.
Yeah.
And even if, like you said, even if we don't get the grant, we usually, you know, I still have the workforce development grant that we can work some things into over time. That we can offset, you know, office supplies.
Right, but we gotta, the generator is a known problem. And it doesn't matter how much money you pour into other parts of it, it's gotta be, you gotta have that replaced or it's gonna, you're gonna keep spending twenty, thirty grand every other year or something.
I just, I just stand like. Like for one building?
That's right.
I.
Terrorists, man.
What'd you say?
I had to, I had to.
What'd you say?
It's the terrorists, man. I had to, anyway. There you go. Ran out of plug space.
Are there any other companies to get bids from?
Oh, there's a.
Other companies to get bids from?
Yeah.
You can get bids, the service contract, you can put out the bids afterwards, even after you get the generator put in. If a year or two later, you're like, oh, we don't like their service, then you can, there's Central Power, I think, is who we use that on ours and we've got CAT Motors or CAT Generators, so. You can bid that out later on. I would probably stick with whoever put it in initially, though.
Well, I guess that's the one thing is if you get a different service contractor and then you have the company and installer and then something goes wrong and then they're just going to play.
Yeah, exactly.
They installed it wrong, oh, this, it's, it's a product defect and then they just argue with each other.
Yeah, you want to keep the accountability as close as you can to start with, for sure.
Yeah, I don't always agree with you.
Yeah, but our targets are tight. I'm not just staying fully on that first offer.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, you might as well.
Bundle, get a bundle.
We do a lot of business with them.
It's our.
What fund?
Uh, this would be.
Contingency?
It's going to be reimbursed.
The OC fund?
Yes. If this reimburs, it's going to be a one fund if it's staying on. I mean, so for now, it's going to have to be an equipment, which, what is that?
Fifty-three or fifty-four.
Equipment reserve?
Those are equipment.
Either your.
It's, is it fifty-three or fifty-two?
For the vaccines.
Yeah.
Because you're out.
Yeah.
That's what we'll outline.
Hey, we're talking about the vaccines, right?
Oh.
Sorry.
I was with her.
It's okay.
I was with you.
At least the generator talk, we've kind of got.
Yeah. Fifty-three hundred, so one oh four dash zero zero.
This is commodity or something?
Dash fifty-three.
Or do you have a vaccine line or something?
No, it'll just be in, yeah, it'll just be in, you're usable.
Okay, I will need a motion to approve a purchase order number three nine eight two to purchase replacement vaccines from McKesson, did I say that right? In the amount of thirty-three thousand, five hundred, ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second. I mean, we're literally talking a hundred thousand dollars.
I know.
Between that and a generator.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven.
And all I can think about is had we handled the generator problem two years ago like we should have, we wouldn't be paying a hundred thousand dollars. Motion's been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. motion carries. I hate to call ourselves.
Can you ever vote him under protest or?
You can. You absolutely can.
I also think it's one of those things that it wasn't very old. It's brand new, so we kept being like, well, then fix it. Like it was just like, we shouldn't have this problem with the brand new generator.
Uh, we had a good long conversation about it and I get it, it is what it is, but at the end of the day, if the generators haven't. Those things, get it out of here.
I, I need a Tums, like.
We're going to take a brief recess.
Thank you, Ben.
I'm, no, I'm fine. Yeah.
Yes, it gives me anxiety.
Summer plots are made in the winter.
Or do you need it?
I know, it's touching news on some.
Back and I will.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other good news?
Uh, well, I mean, on a happy note, I'm almost done with a wound care certification. So we want to do wound care at our clinic.
That would probably be pretty handy for people who are, have limited transportation or stuff like that.
So it'd be something that was established and already has, you know, provider and they go plan a care, they can basically, they can.
Assembly should get their name. You might need to use that certification there for that today.
No, leaving? No.
No.
How many fingers are we holding?
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Fine. You know what I did? I left that original reservation in my car. Oh, uh. For the Williams Court. I already talked and said we proved it, so all we got to do is get it signed.
Wouldn't it be nice if the state, since it's a state name, they do like that stuff, that they would fund that for you?
Yeah, they do a lot, really. I encourage you to visit where she gets well, but they leave it on the person. So you've got a whole.
They do have a lot.
She gets me. Every time she comes in here, she's got two over here. Uh-oh.
No, it's not a goodbye letter.
It's in blue, even. March eighteen.
Thank you, sir.
Not March, no, it didn't say March eighteen.
March twenty-seventh.
Where'd you get, March eighteen?
Says please call in your reservations by March eighteen.
Okay, sorry.
I'm putting it on my calendar. I don't forget.
Uh, this is the yearly county township meeting notice that we're going to have in March. We have several vendors lined up.
Thursday, March forty-seventh. That is correct?
Vendors.
Vendors for the county township meeting and I believe Christine has mailed out stuff to all the townships about the dinner and everything.
I'll check the mailbox.
Hey, maybe get a good deal on a generator.
She has an email, so she's going to send them all.
Only half would joke.
Okay.
She has an email, correct? She mails it.
Mails.
Okay.
Yeah, she mails it.
So. Is she there today? I'm going to stop by. She has all of our contact information.
Oh, wow, what a disappointment.
Um, it'll be March twenty-seventh. It will be at six P M. To have delivery coming in just because of that. Uh, the August B P is March eighth. So if you kind of, they're out, what we need to do and stuff, so.
There's going to be a good deal on a generator there?
Um, we're going to utilize the local four H, uh, we'll be doing the dinner, of course, and the serving. So, and our vendors will cover the cost.
Cool.
So I've been reaching out, she's been reaching out to several, several, Murphy Tractor. Jatt Trucking. I've reached out to Harshman and Murray, but I don't believe them back yet. So we're just trying to link them up every year and try not to have any sources at the dinner that way they can get. And then more for next years.
Nice.
I did see that Josh has a resolution for the, um, all right, transfer station?
Yeah, I did not print it out.
He did with his staff, the county, they know their bits since our first one came in.
You might make sure your name's spelled correctly. I always get hard.
So, and since, once that resolution is tagged to an actual number, I will order three signs from Ashland Sign Company and have them special made. One will be right at the exit of the transfer station, that way the person.
Make sure.
So they're supposed to turn left or right?
They're supposed to turn right.
And go north?
Uh, turn to the west.
And then?
Go back towards.
Oh, leading the transfer station.
Yeah.
Go west and then south.
And then, uh, water manager, this will affect your guys' road. On your side of the township, I'm going to have another one that says use K thirty-one. So we can kind of do that, uh, stop there.
Once you get it choreographed, if it needs to be, then you can kind of have somebody with the flashy lights once in a while, say, hey, what are you doing? Yeah, I mean, just.
So then will that be sent to all the companies that use the transfer station?
Yes, it will be. Once we have a resolution number on it, it will be sent out.
Probably send it by like certified mail or something. That way they can't say they.
Be a bad.
They can't say they didn't.
I never saw that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it sent back out to them, so. Um, I was down there the Monday and I caught auto sanitation using that broom. And you can tell they'd left the transfer, I keep trying to say quarter. They'd left the transfer station and he went rolling by. I just, I was backing at the rail's trail, just watching traffic.
Did it send you an email, Michelle? From my.
Let them know that we are out there, we're paying attention.
Yeah, that's the main thing. Get it choreographed and then kind of say, and we're, we need it.
And now it's superior out there because they don't need that in travel.
And that one's hard to keep up.
Yes. It's very narrow right ways on that road.
Yes, yes.
It doesn't, and they have the trash trucks on that one.
Uh, you don't, you hate to meet a truck like that on those roads.
Yes.
Because we need to get over, especially now in circles of salt.
Ryan, I may need copy also for Josh.
Okay.
Hey, Ryan, I have a meeting that's study presenting, so. Um, our local road guy, the K E C, the replacement for K nine, he has some actual vacation. So we'll probably just have the vendors kind of take that spot.
I wonder if Foley's or Martin Tractor or last time you had that guy from, uh, that sold parts and stuff from, uh, I think he lives out with Nick while I'm saying, I forget the name of that company. Uh, because I called him, so it was a good contact at that meeting, because when we need lanes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll introduce the sponsors at the meeting.
Okay, cool.
So there we have one.
Great, thank you.
We have, this year, since we did Foley last year, we did, uh, lower sales. We're doing J and J Culvers.
Okay.
From N F I H, the Murphy Tractor. As well, I'm going to go here.
Yep. Not Foley's.
Not Foley's.
Not Foley's.
They were there last year or something.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
So you don't have competitors at the same meeting?
Yes.
That's neighborly of you.
Way nicer than I am.
Less than have the two there against each other.
I like seeing them spread.
Now, when you go to bid on their equipment.
They will have the arm wrestling contest.
Do you guys have any?
I don't think so.
On what? Want me to get this one? Should I? Is there something I should ask?
I have a great.
Yeah.
I've been to one. I think Glenn had one. Like, very first year we were here, he had one.
And since John wrote this up, those are just your copies and people.
Oh, man, I suppose I better read it out.
Yeah, I don't.
I put on smart glasses here.
Okay, so there would have been one my first year, maybe not one the second year. And I get, I don't think I went to much, do you? I don't think maybe I got to. I don't remember.
I'm not going to trust that statute. I'm not going to look it up.
I have a feeling I didn't even get to go to that one.
We did only meal meal last year.
I just kind of put it together so we could get hello, Josh.
Yeah, but I just kind of.
Yeah, I didn't go to that. You didn't have food, so. You gotta have food. You gotta have food to get people to come.
That's all I have.
Put on glasses. When are you going to get reading glasses?
I was just waiting you guys out so I could be the last one. He pulled his out, so now I think I'm clear. A little bit. Well, I don't know.
And my mouth.
I bet Brad and I are the same age.
Pretty close.
Eighty?
Seventy-nine.
I am the youngest.
My disco baby.
May fourteenth. I'm also stubborn. Anyway, resolution two zero two five dash zero four, a resolution establishing truck routes for certain roads. I will need a motion to approve said resolution on this, the eleventh day of February.
Can I look? I haven't seen a copy.
It's in the front, yeah.
You have the smart glasses on too.
She was too busy making fun of me and my wife. They're up.
Yeah.
I was talking about food and the.
We had the brief recess for a sandwich. I think that'd be good.
Reaganold was the guy that was in here talking about this, right?
Yeah.
Does this get published in the paper? Maybe we already talked about it.
Like it?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, motion's on the table to approve resolution two zero two five dash zero four.
You made the motion?
It's on the table. I needed someone to make it.
I'll make the motion that we signed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Here it is, here is the formal copy, if I get your, your Henry.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
At least got some legs.
It gives you something to, a plum line to judge off of, you know, I mean, say, look. Rather than say, hey, we really appreciate it.
That's just yours.
But just want, yeah, pass along the formal copy with. Print. All right. Anything else, Mr. Fine? Very good.
Good luck this week.
Yes. We're already, uh, we're already under an emergency declaration, Ryan. You know that?
What's that?
We're already under an emergency declaration. Did you see that?
Yeah.
Kelly issued that earlier week, yesterday being earlier that week.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're goodie.
Uh, they did kind of march down the order of titles, I think. Uh, they did kind of march down the border, totals, I think, kind of. Last part of the county is like four to.
Two to nine, or, oh, four to six.
Now, we're northern parts or whatever, just a lot of.
Well, there, might be fourteen, just careful.
No, you do not need that again.
Looking forward to it.
I have seen four inches when they said four inches before. Yeah, actually, the one, the very first storm that we got that hit Overbrook area, they said a few flakes that night.
Yeah.
And it was four and a half inches.
I do remember.
Well, there was a few flakes involved in that, I mean.
I was like, just gonna be a few flakes.
They weren't wrong, they were just not accurate.
Okay. With that being said, if you guys are okay, I would like to take a brief recess.
Oh, I guess. Sounds good.
Affairs of state must take precedence, affairs of state.
That's the highest.
Did we ever get anything out of Laura?
No.
So let's go ahead and move to the comic plan. With Colleen, is she available? She's been in here, she's book getting out. I forgot my book.
Well, they were looking for Colleen.
Oh.
She was here.
She gone.
Well, while she is making her way, because this happens all the time.
You watch, I'll say this, and she'll show up.
So this is how you get, show up. Uh, a maintenance, emergency vehicle permit. Take it. Or a black chart. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. I'm waiting on my, trustee calling Trisha.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm impatient.
Your partner, I missed it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad. Mike and I used to work at Payless together many, many, many years ago, so.
I forgot about that.
I'm gonna scoot this down here so people can hear me sometimes. I have a soft voice, so.
Man, we need that clock up there. Maybe need the battery.
It's just better if you don't know.
No, no, no.
That actually has a lot more truth to it than you made it.
Oh, I know.
Very wise man. Okay, while we're waiting, here is emergency vehicle permits, or is Jason loving this for them? While you're gathering, you're gonna handle a couple of them?
No worries, I'm just waiting on Trisha, I'm gonna give her the opportunity.
Good. And you're gonna be mad at me because I left my book.
We're not gonna get there.
Today, we'll just kind of take this off.
Process it for me and make sure you guys are already agreed on what this is.
Well, I'm going to disappoint you, I've not read it yet.
Oh, that's okay, I haven't either.
I intended on getting it done last.
It's your book and you haven't read it?
I have not, no, I just received it and I, I haven't had a minute, to be honest, but I have a couple of days planned to scale through it.
Red may be back.
See you later.
Just two?
Is it? All right.
Have you looked at those already?
Yeah.
We need a motion now.
Yep, I'll just need a motion to approve the application for emergency vehicle designation. Well, both of the applications, I assume.
I think they're duplicates.
Yeah.
Oh, it is a duplicate. Oh, it is a duplicate. Okay, I thought you had two different vehicles. Usually with the same person, that's what we get, two separate vehicles.
Yeah, some of them submitted a two, so they get an actual wet copy of one and we keep the original as well.
So I'll just need a motion to approve the application for emergency vehicle designation for Osage County for Quinn Morris.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ooh.
Maybe she is caught up with the public, helping them, someone, sure.
For giving reasons.
Yes.
You can kick off if you like.
Okay, all right.
We'll go ahead and get started with it, and finish signing that real quick. You did not have to go, so then right away, Heather, I just handed the thing in for one moment.
Yeah, I'm gonna set them right here.
Ready?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say good morning. It's been a little while, and I'm basically here today to talk about the Osage County Comprehensive Plan and try to provide an update, a progress update on where we are. If you folks are agreeable, I'd like to, because we haven't talked about it with the community for some time, try to just give a little overview of where we are, and then towards the end of it, really ask for your folks' input on kind of the final adoption stages, we want to make sure you guys are in agreement with those steps.
Very good.
Okay, so, I'm gonna try to speak loud so the community can hear. If you recall, in January of two thousand and twenty-four, so this time last year, we basically kicked off the project, and we sent notification to our county planning commission, to our county leadership, and to the Osage community, and notifying everyone that the Osage County Planning Commission was beginning the process of updating the two thousand and two comprehensive plan. Over the next several months, primarily in spring of last year, the Osage County Planning Commission hosted a series of discussions during their regular monthly meetings on Tuesdays in the evenings, last Tuesday of each month. The importance of this document is that Osage County is in a unique position and in close proximity to growing markets. Growth is coming to Osage County from the north, from the east, and from the south, at a faster rate than ever before. The Board of Commission was committed to developing a proactive vision and a strong plan to allow the county to be responsive to changes that occurs. The core effort is to basically celebrate Osage County rural assets and balance that with economic development growth. With an active and informed planning commission, the comprehensive plan will remain a living document that reflects the vision of the community and serves the county well into the future. If you recall, our goals at the time were to establish guidance on county building codes, establish code enforcement process across the county in partnership with municipalities, and to incorporate renewable policies, which are some of the recent resolutions you folks have asked. So those were our goals. To remind the community what is a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan states a community's vision and will help to serve to help guide the future development of unincorporated portions of Osage County. It recommends policies and strategies for economic development, for land use, for transportation, and for community facilities and services, as well as providing a broader discussion of future land development within the county. We chose at the time to move forward with a streamlined approach. We enlisted Russ Huey of Bauman Company. We expanded his roles so that he would help to facilitate the discussions and to craft the comprehensive plan. I feel really good about our Reader's Digest version, knowing that some of our other counties in the region are currently doing RFPs, and they are like three and four times more than what Osage County has paid for, so I think we have a really good value. Any questions before I move on?
Okay.
In terms of the timeline, as I mentioned, in January, we kicked off the project. In February, our goal was to engage all members of the county, and here's an example of the letter that went out to the community. We did a couple of different newspaper announcements with introducing the project and then the different subjects that were going to be discussed on a monthly basis. We also did social media announcements on multiple occasions throughout the spring to try to engage our community. As I mentioned before, the majority of the work was done in the spring of last year, and there were many long nights with the Planning Commission, and a thank you, and Jaren is still there, representing the commission. You'll recall the long nights, and a huge thank you to the Planning Commission for carrying this forward. We essentially took a break for the summer, and then in the fall, we did want to have some more meetings, but schedules became very difficult, there was a death in the family, and nevertheless, Russ pushed on and wrote up and built the comprehensive plan draft that I understand the Board of Commission, each one of you have received a copy of this, as well as the Planning Board, and are slowly working through it to provide feedback. I also, I also just received my copy and am working my way through it. And that pretty much brings us to today, and just wanted to give you a copy of what our proposed kind of process steps are. I'm in the left-hand side, kind of in the middle, where it says proposed final adoption process. So what we currently have planned is that in February, the last Wednesday of February, the Planning Commission will meet and provide their input on the draft copy. Land Development will be there, and Eco Diva will also be there to provide input. These are public meetings, and we invite the public. We, we really want to engage the community on their input and their insights. And this again will be, we'll put it back out on social media, we'll do, I know that Tricia has planned to do a formal newspaper notification, and there's some legalities around that that she has to do.
Oh, is that, that meeting at seven P M?
It's at seven P M, right, right in this room, yeah.
And it's on Tuesday, the last Tuesday.
Oh, hello, come on out.
We won't move to Wednesdays until March, because we already had a conditional use permit application for that Tuesday.
Okay. Did, did I give you a Wednesday or a Tuesday?
Tuesday, twenty fifth.
Okay, good, so we're good, you got them all squared. Okay, then, as we move into March, we currently have a meeting on the books, a work session planned with our Osage County Board of Commission, with our Planning Commission, if they can make it, all elected officials and department leaders. And Russ Huey will be here to facilitate the conversation. He'll, he'll review the document and basically facilitate the discussion. Our hope is that each one of our county leaders will be in attendance. Their ideas, priorities, resources, capital investments, and implementation timeline, their input on all of these things are essential. It's currently planned to be a two-hour meeting post the Board of Commission meeting, and we will provide lunch. Our hope is the output of this meeting will be an action plan that we can tie to budget, into resources, and a preferred timelines. So, one of our asks today is that the Board of Commission could strongly encourage our colleagues to come to this meeting and participate.
Three eleven meeting?
Three eleven. As we travel through the month of March, there will be another public planning commission meeting on March twenty-sixth, the Wednesday, at seven P M, right here, and again, this is a public meeting, looking for feedback and input on the comprehensive plan discussion, and there'll be other things, I'm sure, that will be discussed. But again, we wanted to have the opportunity to have the community provide more input, to get their ideas, make sure everyone's mostly aligned on how we move forward. As we march on into the month of April, if all goes well in February and March, then at the four thirty, the April thirtieth meeting, we would actually adopt the comprehensive plan. Now, I know in the past, Russ has forewarned us that it's at these very final stages that often the public will come in, and we may think that we have a plan, but it may have to pivot, and we're prepared to do that, so. The more ideas, the better, we'd much rather, you know, this is a living document, it needs to reflect the community's vision. So, any questions on the process?
I have one, but do you, do you have a portion you want to? So, on the very top, where it talks about the, the three items.
Yes.
Incorporating renewable policies, that's the easy part, because pretty much the language is done, it's a matter of getting it in the policy. In regards to establishing any building codes or code enforcement process, where are we with that?
Well, we are.
Do we have any draft language on that, or is that in that?
It's not, we wanted to have the county, the county meeting first, and then from there, if everyone is aligned that this is a top priority, then we would establish kind of, okay, now, who needs to be a part of that? Who are the partners that need to be a part of it? Is there a budget that's going to be needed to bring this together? We know that around us, many communities are using the two thousand and eighteen building codes as a benchmark. Not to say that that's what we would do, but, you know, someone smarter than me is going to figure out where we need to start. My friend.
I knew that was kind of.
Yes, I have been talking to a couple of people about the inspection portion and the codes that we need, and at what times we need an inspection, and what codes are needed for that, as well as builders, and not just the builders, I've got the cement guy, the electric guy, the plumbing guy, the plumber, you know, roof. Talking to all of them to see basically where they're at, what they're doing now, and what is expected of them in other counties, as well as the possibility of licensing and what kind of insurance are they hearing, and do we require them to keep that on file with the county or not, all the various.
So, I'm guessing you probably have a relationship with some counties that you use as a great resource for you. So, do you have counties that already have this established that we could possibly pull from and then just customize if we need to our county without reinventing the wheel?
Not at our size. The majority of counties in our size, they do not do a building code. Where you will run into a building code at the county level is Shawnee County, Douglas County, Franklin County, and I don't think there's a lot of things that they require that you shouldn't be involved in, in Osage County, because you can get into, you know, requiring a permit and a licensed electrician and plumber to change your water heater, you know, putting a ceiling panel.
Right, we want, we want some basic standard building codes. You don't want them so stringent.
Delines.
You don't want them so stringent that you're going to run people off.
Best practices.
Yeah.
Right, that's a good word, yeah.
And then the inspectors that I've talked to, basically, like, they contract with us, and then if the city, like, say, overwork, for example, and they decide that they want to adopt a code, then they have the option to do their own contract, but that way, we're keeping the county out of the city, and they will be separate. Because that's just how it should be.
Yeah, yeah, I have those lines.
So if through our processes of February and March, everyone's agreeable that this is what we should be doing, then we'll put a timeline to that and resources and, and try to bring that to fruition, so.
Are there any cities in our county that already have building codes for the city?
Osage City, Burley Game, I think Linda was working on some.
Yeah.
Yeah, Carbondale has some.
Carbondale has some.
So with the ones like Burley Game has, you think they're sufficient for a county?
Yeah, we have twenty-one code.
Yeah.
Now, to be clear, we're talking about building codes, not code enforcement, which is two separate things people oftentimes can get confused on. I just want those listening to understand what we're talking about, because, yeah, building codes.
Zoning codes, yes.
Yeah, because then the second item is code enforcement, so there are two different items that we need to tackle.
Yeah, the Osage City operates on a little bit older one, but.
The twenty eighteen.
Yep, they have the code as well.
Yep.
And then Carbondale's two thousand and six.
They do have, I thought they banked on Osage County's code. They did have some. Yes. We're good.
So we'll learn a lot, we don't have it all solved today, but first is prioritizing, right, on what are, what are our marching orders? What's everybody aligned on, and we'll get after it, so.
Nice.
The, one thing, I wanted to share, just from the Osage County Planning Commission perspective, kind of a joke of the Planning Commission, because over four years, I've been helping to go over this comprehensive plan. The zoning that we need to do is not just, looking back at Mineral Springs, the only comment on record about Mineral Springs when it was granted was, just don't let it look like it's a card. I want zoning, I want them to zoning practices. I want something that when we get an inspector, which we need desperately, we can share with other cities, that there is some need there, that you can't just say, well, yeah, they just don't let it look like it's a card. Well, we're good enough, and there's no enforcement available for it. So, the economic development is great information, but I'm ready to get into the meat of it. And the, I think the only adjustment made in two thousand and twenty-three was which the campus legislature mandates us to do, mandates the public via the Planning Commission to look at every, so often. But we didn't make any changes except green energy, green.
And you're talking about the zoning portion?
I want zoning.
Yeah.
And I've served on three or four different cities in zoning boards, and Russell and I have had some long discussions about what works best for Osage County, but I still think we need to get into that, and so I'm looking forward to doing that, and I thought that's what Colleen had been working on, because we had a committee for, I thought, looking at revising that, but it was for economic development, so. That's the first part of the plan, so I'm still ready to jump into looking at our codes and looking at, you know, that's a huge job.
a huge job.
So, for the upcoming duties like February and March, is there anything that we need to bring to that conversation to help make that happen? The zoning, planning, and zoning issue, though, is not, doesn't fall under any of the-
Yeah, I mean, it might want to be added as part of the, where you have your three pieces there, that, yeah. So, I was, I too was a little bit confused when I got the binder, and I'm like, this is a very thick. So, I went upstairs and I was like, can you show me the current one? Well, once I looked at it, the very first section of her book, which is this big-
2002.
The first section is a comprehensive plan, and it actually, I looked at the beginning of it, and it's like the table of contents. So, I realized her book has this comprehensive plan at the beginning. Well, then, your section here actually fits in where it says, land use element. The land use element provides the foundation for the Osage County Comprehensive Plan. So, then, in her book, she's got two or three different chapters, but one chapter is the big one that says zoning. So, those regulations are the foundation for this first section of that gigantic book. So, I didn't realize comprehensive plan, a little bit, I guess maybe it's kind of this big overview, and where are we going, and whereas the land, like with her, the meat and potatoes is the land zoning regulation. So, I think this might be a little, there might be another step into that. I was mistaken, I thought comprehensive plan was her big book, and now I'm realizing the terminology I did not understand, and they actually separate it. So, but this is where, this is the starting point, and then I think the land zoning is part of the meat and potatoes. When I asked Tricia about that, she said, well, those policies in there, that's what we're keeping for now, and then that can be revised, you can have amendments, you can-
Dig into it, so every time that we've passed a resolution that changes something-
It's in there.
It's in there. And so, that way, you know, it's like you take out this verbiage, and you're changing into this verbiage, and this resolution on this date is why.
So, do you feel like, you know, that if we dissected that and went through that, that that would yield the best practices for planning zone? Is that what you think would be a good approach? Or?
I'd like to see a work session of Russ and Tricia and Planning Commissioners to discuss what else we thought would help us when we have to make a decision, and too often, we're relying on, I can't look it up in the book, it's judgment, and we're relying on Trish, Trish, can this happen, this? Or is everything especially use permit? Do we need to put down that they can't have, you know, this many cars? How specific do we need to be in this missing? Instead of having it written there, and I don't know if that is the better solution to take each thing individually, rather than saying, here's what it says, and not deviate. I just want more direction.
Well, I think the land use portion, the regulations need to be looked at and determined. This has been on the books for 20 years, we like this, this is sufficient, or we find another topic and go, oh, this one needs to be updated. I mean-
Well, and that's where with the conditional use permits, it gets sort of muddy, because our zoning is 20, it's 23 years old now, but it's a conditional use permit, so you're deviating from what our zoning says that you would like, because if you weren't, then you wouldn't need a conditional use permit. But just to have more guidance, and then also to basically have standard, you know, like I said, with the parking, you know, and more often than not, in our county, the conditional use permit by the majority of people are a, I'm already doing it, so I'm going to ask for forgiveness and permission to look forward and continue to do this. One of the things I've looked at is other counties where, so they have different levels, okay, of conditional use permit. You're going to pay right now $500 if you're not doing the activity yet, and you're asking for approval to do it, or you will pay $1,000 because you're already doing it, and now you're asking for forgiveness.
Kind of a counterproductive way to get people to the line, don't you think? Punish them for going and trying to make things right.
Well, it's one of those when you have wastewater issues that are not up to state standards, and that's what we have to follow, and that's giving our resources off of us.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying if we're expecting people to make things right on their own.
Well, a lot of them, they're not making things right on their own.
Yeah, we have to do it, absolutely.
If they're expecting things right, it's there, something is wrong with my intention, and I send out a letter or contact them, and then they're coming in.
Right.
Yeah, I forgot to do that portion.
So, what you're concerned with, though, is you're wanting more objective terms, so that you can, you have something to guide, rather than a subjective, I feel this way or opinions.
And that's what we're doing, and the argument's been made that we have more control over authorizing certain things instead of going by hook. Well, you see, every commission I've worked on before was in a city, so county is definitely different than city zoning, a lot different. No idea how important gravel was in some of the things.
Indeed.
So.
Yeah, wow, I'm sorry, Rose.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think it just requires more discussion, and just keep it on a case-by-case basis. But Tricia's right, a lot of times, they can't even hardly do that, and it's like, well...
Well, again, if we need to get after that, it may modify the schedule, but that's okay. That's the point of this, is to make sure we're incorporating all this valuable information and guidance for the future.
Well, I think that that is, would be a long time, I mean, the book is-
Yeah.
It's going to take a long time to go through that section by section, and I've commented, then let's set an hour aside each meeting while we're open here, and do the decision.
Now, does that become an action plan? I mean, does that just become a priority from the commission and from the Board of Commission that says, get after this, and here's the timeframe, kind of thing?
I'm thinking it's added down here.
As a goal.
And you work through, so we can start with this and do everything we need to do, everyone reads the draft, we come to a finalization, we all agree, and you can approve this portion, because it's a portion of everything else. But we're working through the building codes and enforcement codes. If those get approved, does that go in the land use part, or is it a new chapter in her book? To where, as we approve these, they're added to that? I don't know if that's a new chapter, if it's part of a different, a current chapter. And then, the land zoning portion, which is going to take some time, you move to that step and be thorough, go through that, and then update.
And then by the end, you adopt it at the end, all with everything completed?
I don't know, I feel like this can be adopted outside of that, because this is not the whole manual, this is a portion, and I could be understanding it all.
This is the overarching plan, this is where we would like to get, this is where we base our decisions off of, and then-
The other chapters are the nuts and bolts.
Yeah, how we make these decisions, where we judge this off of, yeah.
All right, well, shall we converge with Russ, I think, about the next step?
I think your schedule here, just keep pulling that forward, is what she's talking about, it's going to take a lot longer.
Okay.
This will kind of help hash out.
But don't lose sight of that, I mean-
Yeah, no, I'll add it to the key, well, actually, I won't. When we need, as a group, it will be one of the things that Bill Nien and Leslie say, this has got to be done, and then we'll put a timeframe to it, and whatever resources we're going to need. We can't lose sight of, this is all just words, unless we have a budget and resources in departments that are one-people departments, right? So, it's, anyway, we're going to get it done, though. On that note, the only thing I would say is that, you know, within the draft document itself, again, it's about celebrating our roots, it's future-oriented, so it may not be what we know today, right? It's data-driven, so a lot of the information that I've had from the Department of Commerce that may not be widely known has been a part of our discussions, and people-focused, we really want the community's input, and so we hope to press that in the next few months. Would you guys have anything else? Tricia?
No. Let me hear you get it. Moving on this again, sweetie, we have nothing?
Yeah, the only other thing I mentioned earlier is that we said it's a living document, so the planning and zoning team had committed to reviewing it at least once a year on the go-forward, to make sure that it's updated and reflects that it's relevant, right? I think that's all I had. So, may you say out loud that you strongly encourage our colleagues to attend the March 11th meeting?
I will second that.
Please and thank you.
Strongly encouraged.
And we really, we need them, and we need the community.
Yes, and so, if you need to put in your opinion, kind of the end.
Community buy-in would be way better than an edict issued from, yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, especially from the directors of the departments, for sure, that they're going to be affected by it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I have an idea, isn't it?
If I could quickly move to another subject, I wanted to send, thank you so much, a huge, huge, huge thank you to Tricia Webb and Ryan Fine, who made it to the State Capitol Building last week. And I know these things, I mean, it's overwhelming thinking about being out of the office one day, but it was a great day. We were able to basically be there to represent Kansas Association of Counties, but also the Kansas Economic Development Alliance was up there as well, so we had a great day. Basically, we didn't have any appointments that particular day, but we left goodies for our colleagues up there. Yep, absolutely. And I did want to just share with you folks, I just have a copy of some of the talking points and the important things that were going on last week. I'm not going to read all this to you, my, Tricia, I've got copies if you're interested as well. Yes, exactly, to grab. Yep, exactly. And one of my overarching takeaways is there is, again, the Kansas Housing Resource Group was there, speaking to the Kansas Economic Developers, there were 100 economic developers that particular day. I was very impressed with the turnout.
From counties or like a large?
Counties and different entities, sometimes they're chamber people, sometimes they're economic developers, but whomever in different communities. And there just continues to be a tremendous housing need across the state of Kansas. Ryan, who is the head of the Kansas Housing Resource Group, said, we're currently sitting at 4,800 shortage of homes across Kansas, and Topeka in particular has a shortage of 2,700. So, just wanted to, that was my number-one takeaway, and as you guys know, that's our number-one priority in economic development here in Osage. We did see that housing is important, they touched a lot on his, you know, as well as and we did think WIDW, we were not planning on it, but it happened like this, and unfortunately, some of the things were cut out that were said, but basically-
Did they interview you?
Yeah, yeah. So, the number-one thing I talked about was housing, but that got cut. But the great news is, they moved to tourism, and if you recall, we have a million people traveling into Osage County, such an asset our two lakes are. And so, we were able to talk about that, and then downtown revitalization, which is an important goal for this year for Osage County. So, that's a wrap, but so grateful to these guys for coming, showing up, and representing Osage County. It's important that we're there, even though it's a challenge to break away, so. Yeah, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
See, I think it's a much greater, but.
Okay. Did you, or, sorry, do you have a stick, sheriffs, if we're going to do sheriff's hair changes first?
He's going to have to handle it.
Whoa.
No, it's all right.
Oh.
Stretch it out.
Hey, they get too hateful, take him away from the call, I'll do you right, too.
What?
I said, you don't get too hateful, I'll take him away, you'll have to do it right, too.
I was being nice, I told for you. I loaned you mine.
Thanks, Phil.
He probably signed right in his name, because he never knows the why it's the same.
That's kind of the point, isn't it?
Yeah. Irreplacable. Are these all separate single ones?
Yeah.
Winter storm warning.
Did you ever figure this one out? The switch from 86 to 40?
Yes, so it would be, we are to be to 180 here, but they are going to make this.
I was told I have to sit back from the microphone while I open the candy.
That's a real thing?
It's a real thing. Yeah, so if you're talking under your breath, they're going to hear it.
Oh, yeah, but.
We know that, oh, they don't, don't. I was trying to, trying to mess with you, making you look-
Oh, yeah.
They can hear your thoughts.
Oh, yeah, I could hear the pins clicking, things like that.
Oh, they can't hear that, the mayor actually got mad at me. Quick, quick, quick clicker, your pen, it's texting.
Now, remind me again, all these have already been through Fraser's office and the Treasurer's office, and the Clerk's office.
And the Clerk, correct.
And we're just signing off on them, saying, yeah, we understand the process, and-
Correct.
Okay.
We have question, maybe one or two the entire time?
Well, sometimes, there's usually a line that gives an explanation of what it is.
Yeah.
Periodically, there's sometimes if it's left blank, and I'm like, well, what is this? Sometimes Matt's came in, or sometimes Michelle can answer it, and, but the majority of the time-
Payment under protest value.
Yeah, payment under protest, and some of them are real estate, some are personal property, some are trucks, you'll see at the top of the pages, it'll tell you if it's real estate or personal property, and sometimes she'll group them separately depending on what type they are, but there's a line for description, and they do a good job of filling that out.
Is this what Matt's days consist of, is people coming in and setting?
Part of it, yeah.
That's a terrible job.
Isn't it?
Well, anytime I've been around over there, he's always got appointments that come in, you know, like, oh, your 9:15 is here, and I'm like, well, that's all, that's-
Yeah, exactly.
And there is a certain timeframe where people do the, the-
Yeah.
Payment under protest appointment, that's not really what it's called, but, so there is a timeframe for that, so that might be the season right now, too, I'm not exactly sure when that happens.
Michelle's nodding, saying, oh, yeah.
Is that when, is that, there's like a certain amount of so many weeks that they can come in- There's like a certain amount of so many weeks that they can come in and do those things. So I think it's pretty busy during that time, which is good because that's the, available to the public to come in and ask questions and. I don't know when that deadline shuts off, though. Do you know what it runs through?
Mr. Switzer, how are you, sir? Going. It's a lot quieter. You familiar with Dale?
I don't think so. He looks familiar.
Oh, City Utilities Director. He worked for the Corps of Engineers, Eisenhower for a long time.
I feel like I've seen him, so I've probably been at some meetings maybe he's been at, but. I can't say that I know him.
It's going to be fun. These, your arms, your wrists are going to be tired.
I'm ready to get on my start side. What's PUP value adjustment?
What's that?
What's a PUP?
That's the.
Payment under protest.
Payment under protest.
Oh, just an acronym, okay.
Oh, yeah, you'll learn all sorts of acronyms.
They didn't spell that one out, all the other. Depends, I guess it depends on who's writing it up, maybe.
Yeah.
Well, if I could put PUP instead of Payment Under Protest, I would, too.
Yeah. Let's see, this one's backwards, value change from Payment Under Protest.
Just never know if you're exactly right.
Keep your. All right, so, yeah, here's one for like a vehicle, I got you. What do you want me to do with these?
I'll trade you, so you can review those while I'm looking through these and then we can move to approve everything.
Will you cut that in half and give me half of the copy?
You haven't looked at these yet?
Sorry.
Well, I'll let you review those and then we'll handle those. Man, I don't know, they'll get all mixed up. Get a promise not to mix them up.
And these are all from the sheriff's department? Okay.
Oh, they are different ones.
Mr. Holman, do you ever get into any specifics, any of this?
I usually don't, just for reasons of anonymity.
Gotcha.
It's all the public, but.
Well, yeah, I, I didn't know if you.
Yeah.
I would assume there's always a paper trail if we were asked to ask Chris about it.
Yeah. Yeah, he's always really perceptive to questions about those. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that. I'm going to be making a phone call.
You want those?
Oh, yeah, look at these. Did you see anything in the payroll status change report by the sheriff, Heather?
No.
No issues? Did you have any?
No.
Seen a motion to approve the payroll status change reports brought forth by Sheriff Wells.
So moved.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I have our handies, if you want to work on signing them.
Okay.
And I'll stamp these. Stamp for the work, too.
Those two signatures look close. It's almost the same.
Now it's going to be your mission, isn't it? Big bubbles in my mind, I've dropped.
I disappointed the teachers a long time ago on this stuff.
Yeah.
You remember the old tablets where you'd have the two lines and they're like, just stay in between? Yeah, I didn't have.
I actually sat on the council with an English teacher for high school, which was pretty fun. I signed my name one time in front of her and she slid it over to me. You can do better than that, yes, ma'am. Great.
That's funny. That there's funny.
It's just like this, but you just never know. You're, you know what your future's going to be. Did you see anything in the payments, Heather?
No. Oh, okay, I thought it was my bad. No, I, I stamped this.
This is how.
To approve the tax rule corrections brought forth by Michelle Morse for years of twenty-four, that's the only ones I see. Did we have some twenty-fives in there? Tax years of twenty-twenty-four.
Uh, so moved.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
That's why Michelle's wearing a deal on her shoulder, signing too much.
I know, she should have a stamp, is that what you? She signed, you don't have to.
You're holding your stamp upside down.
I did that a couple of times, actually. Through quite a few checks. It was.
Tragic.
It was funny, not funny, you know? Got halfway through and went. Okay, some payroll changes, payments. We can do that here, we'll put these all stamped.
We should be coming to a close on this pretty soon.
Fred, would you like to come up front and center? Join us for PBC hearing?
Yep.
Since we've done stamping these, we will recess the commission meeting in lieu of PBC.
Haven't seen you in a long time, but how you been?
Good.
Fred, do you talk to old Gaylord very often?
I haven't for a while.
Okay, I didn't know. No, I just. Just going to ask him how, ask you how he was doing. I didn't know if you're, visited the same coffee shops or not.
No, I'm not a coffee shopper.
I think, I think you guys have all done those, I think.
Very good. Section's done. Here you go, there's the rest of those, if you want to keep them all together. And then we will recess the commission meeting in lieu of PBC meeting at this time. President of the PBC, the floor here.
I'm not the president.
Aren't you the vice president?
I'm the secretary, I think.
Secretary, are you the vice president?
I'm not in on that, hold on.
I think I got it due the last time, anyway.
Yes, sounds like it.
How I got, I thought I was just a member. You're the president now.
No.
No? We've just got the one bill here, we'll pass it around for review and we'll motion to send it to the commission. We're not done with it. Have we done a bunch first yet? They're still walking through all that. They're trying, they're getting equipment fired up and making sure all that's working.
They got about one-point-eight million in retainage still, so I'm guessing that.
Right. A lot of that will be paid out for.
I'm guessing that will be our last thing.
How's your day going so far?
Well, today's okay.
Ready for some snow?
Yeah, I'm hot.
Oh, you did? Oh, no. Your service line coming in or what in the house?
No, I'm sort of hybrid.
On this, Michelle? I think. Jay will have to come down.
Right.
And then he can sign, chair, the president, Jay's got something.
Come water out, dig some more.
That ain't no fun.
I don't know what, I don't know how that works.
Jay have to sign that, too?
I think Jay will have to come sign this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he has to sign all of them.
Yeah. It'd probably be easier to just have him finish signing them and then just switch it all around. I don't know what the process is.
Have you seen this? I'll let you read it.
Are these in any order?
Oh, now you did it. No, I'm just kidding. The paperclip ones would be.
These were the ones that you gave me, these were the top ones?
Like it? You want to look through that, PBC bill for the jail?
I want to.
You don't have to. Kind of late in the game. Worried about that stuff.
Absolutely not, yeah.
So I will need a motion to approve sending the invoice number two-five-dash-zero-one-two-four P E of K V S in the amount of five-hundred-seventeen-thousand, fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents to the commissioners for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now I'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, well, thank you, Fred.
Again, I do.
Good seeing you.
We will reconvene the regularly scheduled commissioners meeting. I will need a motion to approve paying invoice number two-five-dash-zero-one-two-four P E K V S in the amount of five-hundred-seventeen-thousand, fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I think you make that the only sign sheet. All right. PBC's done. Ms. Cooter, payroll discussion with Scott, payroll amount, bank C D. A little hawk and a steele is done.
Yeah, I messaged Laura, asked her if she was available at some point, but I haven't heard back from her. Scott, I messaged and he says he's available. So do you want to call him on your phone? And then he can go over. So we'd had the discussion a few weeks ago and we had approved the pay raises. But the amount of the three-hundred thousand that bit aside for, set aside for that, the actual amount of all the raises went over. I estimated about fifty-six thousand. I did, when I visited with Scott, I told him, I said, I'm not sure if that's correct or if it's a little bit more or less, and he thinks it's actually a little bit more than that. But.
Oh, Laura didn't, no.
Thank you.
All right, you can come on up. You have personnel status change, bond payment, and thank God.
So the first one is the personnel change going from part-time tenure, twenty-four hours per work a week, to part-time over twenty-four hours per week.
Still part-time?
Yeah.
So, but I guess I'm a myth with that one. So instead of working twenty-three hours, they're going to work twenty-five?
Uh, less than twenty-four, I mean, two to, not quite, three days to over three days, because.
I understand what it means, I'm very familiar with this. But this whole part-time status thing, you're potentially swapping out two hours here for, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
It's not full-time.
Right.
It's less than, you know, thirty-two hours.
Right.
Because if they work three days.
But if this person's still part-time.
Right, but yet you can't have the twenty-four hours because in our office, you don't get right now at five, you're still balancing. So it kind of has to go over that twenty-four hours. At the beginning, I was told it would be best to do the four or less.
Does this line up with our current way we do? Part-time, regular, because I thought we had thirty-two, twenty-four, and forty hours. Or well, thirty-nine.
I think it's twenty-four to, anything under twenty-four.
I understand the difference, I'm talking about what we had current and how we're visiting.
I think it's different, we need to change our form, so there are no issues.
Right.
She's going to work somewhere between twenty-four and thirty-six hours a week.
Twenty-four to probably thirty.
Well, I mean, the range is twenty-four to thirty-six, considered part-time. Well, I mean, the range is twenty-four to thirty-six, considered part-time, so anywhere between that, that's my question.
Yes.
And she's planning on it regularly.
Right.
Okay.
And this is not part-time with benefits either?
I think when you're at the twenty-four to thirty-six, there's, um, partial benefits, yeah.
That's, in policy, it says prorated. Does anybody know what that's a quoit, quoit in?
There is nothing, it just says prorated.
I know, I'm asking these questions because we're trying to figure something out before we walk into a situation where you're going to have more issues, you know?
If you're... I, uh, I'm just not going to go there as well.
I just think...
That's why we were trying to get clarification last week and stuff.
Right.
Get a timing and everything, because she can't go to the old time around now.
Raise for two more hours, potentially.
Otherwise, it'll cause issues later and...
Yeah.
And we wanted to try it out at the less than twenty-four hours, which we had discussed, because she didn't know if
What it would do, yeah.
the twenty-four hours would work, so...
Hmm.
So now she's available to go work for twenty-four?
Yes, yes.
But sooner or later...
Correct.
But sooner or later, we, or the county's going to have to figure out what...
We need to use policy.
Yeah, what the prorated is.
And I will tell you, as part of ADP, they have a whole bunch of features, one of their features is they have what they kind of described as like a policy library.
Oh.
So, they said when you have policies, if you're wanting to update them or whatever, they're like, we have a whole, basically a library policies that they can assist as you're creating policies, revising them, updating, changing them. So, that might be a resource that we could say, what are the examples of...
Yeah, so we can, when we fall into the, what was that, non-regular part-time on that, you know?
My whole point was cutting some of that stuff now.
Yeah, yeah.
Into...
Right, yeah, simplify it.
Right, I feel like they reinvented the wheel here and there's no need for that.
When we, um, updated the policy manual a couple of years ago, the policy manual we used was actually from K Camp, our liability carrier, so we just took their draft. And we did go through it chapter by chapter and we kind of customized a few things, but that was kind of a beginning, like a entry level, I think, policy manual, and so, we were comfortable starting with them because they're our liability carrier. So, we felt like, well, the items in the book are things that they think are important, so, but, we can add and revise, and I think ADP's going to be a resource with their library, that can give some clarification.
So, but all we need right now is just the different, differing hours, right?
It, it comes with an increase in pay though, that's the biggest question.
Well, that was, well, that, I, that was what you guys had voted through, otherwise I would have left it.
Okay.
This is the increase that we have...
That dollar twenty-five is what you guys had done, that way it's on paperwork.
Okay, just making sure.
That is not, that's not me giving it, that's what you guys had voted on and that's to indicate it in there so that there's a paper trail.
Right, okay.
And that's why it's documented with the dollars.
So, if there hadn't been the dollar twenty-five, it would have been the same, it just would have been, I'm moving it to more hours, but the pay rate would have been the same.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's why you've increased things and all of that, yes.
Basically, the difference that you're going to figure out is whether you're eligible for on benefits.
Yeah.
Right. Last night, I talked about it a little bit, and he knows where I stand, but that's whatever you guys want to do.
Because we're concerned with what that gray area is on the prorated.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Does she want benefits, did you ask her that? If she qualifies?
Anybody would want benefits, not anybody would want benefits.
Well, you know, making an assumption, maybe, yes. Never assume, you always ask.
Right.
As a department head, that is very important, because the only reason that I'm even bringing these conversations up is more making these decisions.
Every employee would want benefits.
Right. You don't know that? I'm an employee here and I didn't take the interest.
The employees I talked to would like benefits.
But you didn't ask her, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Yes, I did.
But then, when I just asked you a second ago, why didn't you tell me, yes, I asked her and she wanted benefits? Simple answer. So, when she wants benefits, now we need to figure out what that proration looks like. Or do we just grant the normal paid insurance, you see them saying, that's the question, the, the discussion that Michelle and I was having, that the policy book doesn't dictate, it doesn't spell out what that proration is. I can make up all kinds of ideas, I have lovely ideas, but we need to know what it needs to state before we grant this, this person...
Can I ask you guys for just a minute, because I know you guys are the people that I need to talk to, okay? I live in Rappaher, two sixty-eight, the Dollar General store, one in. These guys, who's the top dog here?
Well, it's the Commissioners.
I'll show you a picture here, yeah, okay, that I just took. This is scattered all across the highway. Down there, and I just like to know who, who's, I mean, because I, I build roads, I've been doing it for forty-one years, okay? I'm held responsible for that kind of stuff, I don't go in and destroy people's properties and not be held accountable, who's going, who's going to take care of that?
Who did?
Heh.
The ones that are doing it?
The dirt contractor.
The dirt contractor?
Yeah, his local operator pulled stuff out and he just left it, you know? I mean, that, that one piece is that why, and that thick, right in the middle of the highway.
That's, that's actually a call to the sheriff.
I did, I told the sheriff definitely about it over to Osage when I was at the, uh, dealer's disco center. And that's what I'm saying, I don't know who holds them responsible, because I mean, that's, that's how they got all this done, because it was voted out before, and then they got, all of a sudden, they're building, they're building, okay? I understand this kind of stuff, but I, you know, somebody needs to be held accountable for that stuff.
The Sheriff's Department is the enforcement mechanism for those codes, yeah.
It is?
Yeah.
So, I just, I gotta be, don't complain to the sheriff?
Yeah, yeah.
When, when are we going to zone this country?
If, if the county is zoned and we actually are working on better, we were just having a conversation.
So, I want to give you inspection.
Planning and zoning board, we don't have an inspector in this county yet.
Okay. Uh, all I'm going to do is create a question, I apologize, I had it up to you.
It's okay, I understand. Yep, thank you.
I just, I need, I just wanted to kind of know, because like I said, I, I'm held accountable, you know, I don't care where I go, you know, build my roads, there's somebody there watching, dogging me, you know, to do my job right and everything. And right here, it seems like they can just come in, do whatever they want to, I don't care. I mean, they're building a building on frozen ground and everything else, you know, I mean, it's just not hurting.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're, that's why we're approaching this and we're talking with the planning committee, it doesn't happen overnight, sir.
So, do we need to talk on this, do we need to get legal advice on that, see where our liabilities would stay on not having anything prorated on paper, or what?
Yeah, that would be my, we need to ask what that, we need to find out what that proration looks like, and the designation twenty-four to thirty hours, to me, it doesn't make any sense, set them at a set schedule.
I did make the forms.
I get it, I understand that.
Yeah.
Any advice, thoughts?
Um, I mean, I'm okay with approving that, and I think if you want to put on, um, an agenda item where we can go through the policy manual portion, and then if we want to get clarification on that, you know, we can work with Josh, or we can see if ADP has availability yet, or we can be looking at those policy options and work on it.
Yeah, I just, if we're approving this, we're moving her into that status where the, that she gets benefits, she, she's eligible for benefits, that's kind of...
I think there is eligibility, but it's less than the thirty-six.
There's nothing to it, it's part of our policy, she is eligible when we approve this.
Yeah.
So, I was just hopeful that we would be able to say, hey,
Here's what we, here's what we...
she is seventy-five percent, eighty percent, or whatever that number be.
We don't have any precedent on...
Just, that's prorated.
Gosh.
So, I, here's what I would be comfortable with doing, is approving the contingent, you know, keep the benefit, you're going to have to explain to her that the benefits are going to be based on what our findings are in the next one or two.
Right, and she's aware of that.
So, there will be, there's partial benefits.
I told her there was issues with the policy.
Oh, yeah.
And stuff like that.
Okay.
So, she's aware of that, um, and also that's with H R, she can discuss it with H R, because that's the hours and benefits and things like that, so...
Which, that, people keep poking, and I get a little...
Easy tiger.
Well, I want to keep my tongue to myself, but, um, that's a whole other ball of wax, but I'll need a motion to approve the, sorry, you got...
With this, right?
Right.
Yeah, good, okay.
Motion to approve the personnel payroll action form brought forth by Treasurer Laura Hawkins. The benefits package contingent on the next couple of weeks' research, I'm just going to state it that way.
Is that fine?
Depending upon what the policy, what you guys decided on the policy.
Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay?
Seems like every other week we get something wild like that, or it's...
It happens, yeah, we've been knocking them out a little bit lately, but...
Huh.
There's a, there's, there's a lot of different designations for employment in this county, it's...
A lot of one-offs?
Yeah. And it's been long before us.
Sure.
Laura's fits, Heather's fits, everyone's fits, it's been a long time.
And then, this was another one of the non-filed tax returns, so you guys had your copy of it, I also included the form that needs filled out, just get it changed over into either O S H County or O S H County clerk, whatever. Uh, it's something I don't have authorization to do, but it caused issues with me, you know, serving that warrant last year.
Because your name was, was...
Because it's O S H County treasurer.
They haven't sent to the treasurer.
Right.
Probably should, but...
O S H County.
It come, it come to O S H County, um, but it's, oh, this has been issued for four years. And some, for some reason, it's addressed to the treasurer and it shouldn't be, and so...
And the treasurer has no authorization to any of those forms or anything to do with it.
Is it related to like payroll filings or whatever?
I wonder if it, retailer sales.
Okay.
Which I'm not so sure that it does. And I think that one is just if the Roden Bridge sells something, that's a annual report that, um, that give you the total, and you just put in the number.
There's filing, there's filings.
That difficult, it's just, I don't have access to it.
And I think that probably the treasurer's name on it is because it says O S H County treasurer on all our bank accounts, so that's probably why they do that.
Really?
That is a form that is specifically broke out how to be employed.
Yeah, they could change it to O S H County, and does that have the, the general, um, address on, this is seven-one-seven or whatever? Yeah. So, this is just a year-end sales tax filing?
So, do you just need, do you just need contact to inject it to O S H County clerk?
Or Osage County? Can you, can it just be open-ended like Osage County, or does it have to have a title on it?
For November.
Whenever I sign, I think I buy it as O S H County, or County of Osage.
There you go, I like that. Do more of that.
I'm assuming because of the bank accounts, probably why I signed that maybe, but...
I don't think that's tied with the bank accounts. That might be why.
Yeah, it's a...
Just pass it on, Michelle, she can fill it out, send it off.
Yeah, and they're not even assessing penalties, they just want us to file a return.
Right.
Sometimes there'll be penalties on there.
And like I said, it's just going into the system and plugging in the number and, but I don't have access to that.
Well, you'd just rather not have your name. You'd hate to be held responsible for something you can't, you can't do.
Right, and I don't have access. Okay, and then, um, there was a check that had came in for ready, uh, wind, which we had been discussing for quite some time. Um, there was a copy of it. And the next discussion is, whoops, sorry. The very first one that was received, it was put into Roden Bridge. There was thought that that's where it should always go, but after research, that was due to them getting penalized for being on roads that they weren't supposed to be on and stuff.
During the construction phase or whatever?
Correct.
I got you.
And, so anyhow, the other payments have been, uh, gone underneath miscellaneous receipts, which we're trying to get out of, because that causes issues and we can't find them later. There's a payment in lieu of taxes, and a federal-owned land entitlement, there's those, or where do you want me to receive this in?
I, you gave us some copies of this last week or something, or maybe you emailed it, and at the top of the statements, it says pilot.
It does say, up there on the check, it says annual pilot payment property tax for ready and...
So, I feel like payment lieu of tax, the fund five nineteen is, uh, reasonable. My question is, do we get any other pilot funds that we would need to keep them separate, like...
Reservoirs?
Well, the reservoirs go in that federal land entitlement, which is a, it, and she made a copy of it too.
For the lakes, and that's what I was assuming that it goes into now, previously, no, I don't have to do that every time, but not everything has always been going into right funds, which we all know.
Right, which you guys are working on, straightening it out, so.
Yes, yes.
I'm fine with...
And that's why I'm specifically asking on this, because I can't ask one and not the other, it has to be done at open meeting.
Is this just a one-time-a-year check that's sent you? Okay.
Yeah, I think the, um, you...
No, we want it in the right, right in the...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, because you're setting a precedent for the next year, and the next year, and the next year.
Exactly.
Exactly.
It's all right.
No, I wasn't laughing when you said it all, I was laughing at the whole dig about, might be the last one about the other. Um, I think you need to ask Scott. He's the one that builds our budget, he's the one that's going to know the legalities and where it's supposed to go. It's a pilot, we have a pilot line item, obviously, someone has created this all, already. So, if we have to keep it separate, the answer's relatively easy, ready wind farm has a line item in there, and then the fund.
Right, but I have to come before you guys.
You don't, actually, you can contact Scott and ask him a question, and then you can come before and see if we agree, you're saying, there's multiple ways to get it.
For me, my limitation is the payment lieu of tax fund, that would be my limitation.
Whereas, in fact, by the check, before it was in Roden Bridge miscellaneous receipts, and we're trying to do away from
Yeah.
not being able to differentiate where money is, because that's a lot of the issues.
Yep.
So...
Oh, yeah, yeah, specify, that sounds good. Do you need, yeah, you want those back? I'll lose it for sure if I have it anyway.
All right.
And then, these are bonds that need paid. Sheriff's bonds, just so that you're aware of that. So, a public...
That's the bond payment. Yeah, and I had, I don't know if I visited with you about it, or if it was Linda. But I ran the year-end report, I was looking at things, and when I got down to the half-cent sales tax, the, for the sheriff, for the jail, there hadn't been a paid out of that line item, but there'd been a payment made out of bond and interest, and it was like negative a million dollars or something. I think it's getting paid out of the wrong line, I think it should be paid out of the half-cent sales tax.
And that's the other question that we need to have the...
Because, let's see, we started collecting in, I think, July of twenty-two, does that sound right? And the sales tax was supposed to produce about eight fifty, about a hundred, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-ish, about, it was supposed, it was going to create just about equal to payment.
Right.
And there's the line.
But when I looked at the, when I looked at the fund for the half-cent sales tax, it's like over two million dollars, so I don't think payments have came out of the right fund for that.
Oh, yeah, fund balance, yeah.
It's, and the, and the bond and interest line is...
And that's what we're trying to straighten up, is years of issues of money coming out of the wrong ones or what have you, and that's why I'm here, is making sure that we're all in agreement.
Yeah.
That we're putting money in the right line, because I can't decide where it is.
Yeah.
This money comes in...
And I appreciate that it's not getting, uh, so the appearance isn't that it's a...
It's supposed to be received in and where it's to go.
Right.
And...
So, it's not like we're, it's Laura making her own decision, it's, this is what the county said.
Exactly, just like when departments bring in money, they're supposed to let me know where to receive it in. And just like paying money out, if I do have to pay it out, then I need to know what account it comes out of. That way, it's being done properly, because you can't go back to previous years, because you just can't.
This one I'm not familiar with, so I don't know if this was something created maybe years ago for the other jail, I'm not familiar with that, but maybe... This one I'm not familiar with, so I don't know if this was something created maybe years ago for the other jail, I'm not familiar with that, but maybe we should be using it, it's the Osage County bond issue. But, this one is the Osage County half-cent sales tax of twenty-two, so for our current payments, I do believe they should come out of there. So if they came out of bond and interest, can that be swapped out, is there a...
Yes, we can do.
Process for that?
Transfers.
Does that bond payment come out of sales tax, or does it come out of the PBC?
Hmm.
Bonds that we've been paying the bills? So when I talked to Scott earlier today, he thought that's what came out.
That's again why I recommended visiting with Scott.
When we, the way I understood it when it was all set up, if I understood it correctly, was the bond payments for the jail would come from the sales tax revenue. So, but we can clarify that with Scott, and then, I don't know...
I didn't call Scott, I've talked to him before, and I didn't get designations out of him to talk to the commissioner, so...
And like I said, that one I'm not, I'm not familiar with that one, I don't know if it's something recent or from years ago.
It just says bond on it, or whatever, jailhouse bond or whatever.
Alright, anything else?
Okay, and then we have, um, the bank paperwork. That can you do, maybe get signatures on or what have you. Um, on this, it does have, um, that's a bridge one and two.
Oh yay, we got one of three.
Yay.
Okay. Okay, so, can you tell, can we just go through them and tell me what they are? I think it's just updating signature papers, is that right?
They're CDs, they are CDs.
Okay.
And on those CDs, the paperwork is all saying that one of the three people is all that's required for the signatures. And if, um, if that is left as one signer required, I do want something, um, that I'm not responsible. If, you know, somebody else signs and I'm not aware of it, or something like that. Um, or if there's two signatures and the treasurer has to be one, whether it's me or now in the future.
Cause the treasurer's...
We're gonna be fixing all this in October, so...
Cause the treasurer's name is, I mean, the treasurer's spot is on all that, is what you're saying?
Correct, and now it's trying to...
But potentially, like, like, yeah, so potentially, one of the other two people who would not be the treasurer would be able to...
So you're just saying on the front page?
Unilaterally sign it?
On all of the CDs.
But it's by a resolution.
Okay.
That all that's set by a resolution, who can sign and who, and who can't, and it designates actual names of those people that they'll know. And then, you have to have, we set a minimum of two of those three to sign.
But these have...
These say one, so this may have to be updated.
You say one, and it doesn't have to be the treasurer's position, so in order to protect the treasurer, regardless of who it is...
The position, yeah, not the person.
Yeah, and I would think that if it does, if it does have two, then the treasurer, whoever it is...
Guess you get word, it's saying...
Needs to be one of those two.
Two signatures included.
Right. We've got twelve banks throughout the county, we've only done this for...
No, I'm, I'm fine, so this one is one that maybe needs to be adjusted to have two signatures on it, that says two there. I'm asking you. Cause it says one, is this where you're saying it should say two?
All of them say one.
Yeah, the ones I said.
They're all set as one.
We can set a resolution. That goes above the... That banks stay up, that's what the banks require.
Uh, with...
We can still require two.
There again, regardless of who the treasurer is, the treasurer's in, you know...
Yeah.
Responsible for the money, that I think there's should be something in place to protect the treasurer.
I would agree with that, do, so what is required today, what do we need to do today on this? We just work, let it know, be known that we need to have a resolution next time, or...
Well, they may need to adjust their...
Yes, the paperwork needs adjusted, they will not adjust it without a resolution.
Okay.
So, on this one, if you look at the front page...
Yeah.
You'll see where there's, in the, it says one...
Yeah.
On all of those.
Yeah.
So that one would need to be adjusted. On here, these are a little different.
Those say two, but they don't specify...
At the bottom, it says one signer required for withdrawal, so if we want more than that, this would need to say two signers, with one being the treasurer, or something.
That would be simple, I would like that.
And I'm not really sure why it's like that, it's all different, it's her two.
Yeah.
So we just need to take some of the verbiage from another bank, send it over to them, tell them to adjust it to match that?
Yeah, with a please and thank you on it.
And then we need a resolution from Josh?
Either resolutions, they want a resolution.
Sure, sure. They want reference something.
And everything else, so...
Yep, and a resolution for...
So there's four different accounts here. And then this one actually looks like we're changing terms or something, so this is something a little bit...
Did it mature?
Yes, because a lot of the CDs are usually in the treasurer's, because you have ten days to get them changed.
Yeah.
And giving signatures is always, you know, and now they want...
Yeah.
Add other people's names and stuff, but if they're adding other people's names, I want something to protect the treasurer, regardless of who it is.
Yeah, if you don't sign off and change it on purpose, they just roll over, right, and then they're stuck into whatever term they give you?
Well, that's the thing is, I don't know what rates are right now, but this is, the rate is staying the same, so I don't know if rates have gone up or not.
Sure.
But if, if they've gone up, we'd like to...
But you only get the ten days to...
Capitalize, if they've gone down, I don't know. Um, but this is from January second.
That was a Norman account, actually, from a Norman account, that had been drawing money for the county for years. There were a lot of those in December that we tried to get closed up, and I rolled them over into CDs. So that, and this was, you know, to where we're getting for...
Something, yeah.
Something percent versus nothing.
So is this something we can sign today? Cause this is something different.
Um, that all has...
That has the change in terms, change in rate. The rate's the same actually. Here are these if you want, yes, that we can...
Yeah, 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 I have those, we just need to, yes, we need to, we need to change the verbiage on that, and then get a, a resolution or something official, so that the bank believes it.
Right, cause they'll have, you'll have to have the approved minutes for all that too. But that, that bond maturity, which sheet is that? That's the one she's got currently?
I think so.
Then you have a sheet that was a bond maturity, and we can sign today?
Yes.
Is that that one, or is that the one I passed off accidentally?
This is January change certificate term, change certificate rate.
And is that the best rate we can get?
Term one hundred eighty-two days, maturity July one of twenty-five, January...
Well, they may not honor that. Will they honor that? Okay.
So we see a motion to approve, uh, Laura Hawkins, Osage County Treasurer, to sign the account modification for interest, uh, interest-bearing bond. Sorry, trying to find a, a number or something.
Over to the right, the accounts are accounting.
Hold on. Interest rate change certificate account one zero one seven nine.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
I didn't think you needed that.
Signature line, yeah, thanks. And that was the only one that had changed for that, right?
Right, right, but then it's also in this other paperwork, because they wanted...
Yeah.
You know, they wanted to judge it over to where there's, uh, any of the three people can sign, which therefore, like I said, I want a resolution passed.
Somehow it protects the position of the treasurer, so that things don't happen, I gotcha, yeah.
Well, and that's what our bonds due to.
Yeah.
Our personal bonds, and then your personal insurance, personal liability.
Then it protects the position as well.
Yeah, I gotcha.
We're bonded through KCF for each position too, up to so much?
I think that's...
So that'll license to screw up, you're right?
And it's covered by the county. Errors and omissions policy.
Thanks Laura. Thank you.
Errors and omissions is what that's called.
Possible deniability, or that's something different.
That's something different. Okay, now...
Excusable negligence.
On to the payroll discussion with Scott.
Yes, can I do the other payroll amount first, and then we'll do most of it? So, we did payroll last week, and I did let know on it, cause I was just not quite sure about the amount, and I visited with Michelle afterwards. And she, she had explained about the amount that had gotten deducted. I visited with Josh, and he said that that amount that we had deducted, that does have to be approved, and the reason is, is that if you don't approve those deductions, then we haven't authorized those dollar amounts to be sent to Aflac, or to the insurance, or to the savings account. Cause we had taken...
As a separate line item, you're saying?
Right, so last week, so in the past, we have taken the gross income, which includes all the deductions, so you take the gross income, and you take the employer contributions, and you add those together. And then that matches the, um, labor distribution. And so, last week, that middle column got deducted out, so we only approved like five hundred some thousand, and it should have been like seven forty. So, I just, I had gotten confused about it, but we need to go back and approve...
We approved the payroll on that amount, and so now we can approve those deductions in that separate amount.
Yes, so what we would need to do is...
Just make a motion right now to approve it.
Just to approve that, and then...
Just make a motion to approve that, and then I'll second it.
Okay, just moving forward.
Sure.
What we can do is, if we do this line and this line, and then it will match the distribution.
Gotcha, we just have to spell it out, we have to...
Well...
The two numbers or whatever.
Yes, and I can, I can show you which numbers, and then on here, it's actually, it's pretty easy, but, um, anyway, we do need to approve the employee deduction. Is it, do you want me to call it the February first payroll, or one thirty-one?
I guess one thirty-one.
Okay. So I would move to approve the one thirty-one payroll effective two one. Employee deductions in the amount of one fifty-six, or one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-three and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
You said you were gonna second it, I was waiting.
Oh, sorry, I didn't follow it, I said the other one. Okay.
So, yeah, I remember that conversation from last time, how do you remember that now?
Correct, okay, what's the next?
Okay, then the next one. Yeah, that was Laura's, that was a duplicate, um, so my apologies on that. So the last one is, uh, with Scott, he was available up until five minutes ago. So, uh, we can discuss this, and then, if, it says, if you would all come up with new personal service line items for each department by fund, then I'll mark up the twenty-five budget with the new numbers by fund. Then we can have the conversation, and it'll be more meaningful, because we'll be able to see how each fund's impacted. So then, Michelle had handed out, um, two sheets, which I haven't looked at yet, so I was, um... So is this with new numbers or current numbers?
I think it's current, or the raises in that.
Okay, cause one says one one twenty-five, one says one thirty-one twenty-five.
Well, it's just that I didn't see that.
Okay, so once, okay, so the second one.
The twenty-four has what they handed with, the twenty-four.
Oh, I see.
At least they got nice big print on it for me.
Sorry, I didn't see the twenty. So then he would want us to go through each department? And add those totals as a gross number, and give those back to him? Does that sound right, Michelle? I'm gonna read his message to me again. If you would all come up with the new personnel service line items for each department, and by fund, then I will mark up the twenty-five budget with the new numbers by fund. Then we can have a conversation.
So...
So then we need to go through and add on the monthly...
Well, we don't, um, don't we have the record of what each department got approved? And how much it would add up to? Cause we gave a dollar twenty-five across the board to employees, correct? So we have that number plus a dollar twenty-five to add in. So we need to know that, we'd have to add that on there, and then, we had six thousand a year for elected officials, minds commissioners, right?
Well, I think with her information, the second sheet dated twenty-five has all the dollar amounts updated, right? So, we would just have to go through and add the yearly portion, I guess, and, cause he wants it by department and fund. Now I will say...
We're just gonna total up each one, correct?
Yeah.
And show which funds it did, what, what funds it's coming out of, right?
Yeah, so a lot of the departments will be out of the general.
Yeah.
Um, as we add each department, then that personal line item will adjust for each department, so they'll know what their personal line item is. Then the departments that are outside.
Right.
Health, council on aging, general transportation.
Well, but you're, but you're creating a line in the general for each one. This is the way Scott and I have talked about it. Because you have to have it in that, because you have that cash overhead. So each, like the county attorney.
So it would be a line that says county attorney, whatever.
Exactly, county attorneys, uh, cause this is just a pay schedule.
Sure.
We would need the total budget, which I would like, I mean, I think it's gonna be easier if we have the line items and everything right off the CIC, that report. Because what we'll have to do, county clerk, she has one, two, three, four...
Five.
Five employees that are not elected, at a dollar twenty-five. You gotta total that up.
Well, I think she's already at, those are already on here, do you have two sheets?
I understand that, I'm trying to explain to you how, when Scott and I talked about this, we have to take that number, and we have to take it out of, say, her commodities line. And we have to create a line in the general that says clerk's commodities, six thousand dollars per instance. That way, her fund does not go over, because of the raise in payroll, the adjustment, is the way he explained it.
I didn't...
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I didn't understand it that way, but...
So like, you have all these lines in this budget, right here, all these lines, here's the general, so you're gonna create another line, that's gonna say clerk's commodities. And it's gonna have, say she needed six thousand, say the total amount of raises she gave out.
To make it whole, yeah, I gotcha.
Right, to make it whole, that way, cause we have the cash overhead in here, we don't have it in the clerk's fund, cause the clerk's payroll, it's already set. So then that way, when she needs commodities, she cuts the check out of this, out of the general, and then it doesn't reflect in here.
So why aren't we adding it to their personnel line item?
Because we would have to amend the budget, to look, to add it to their personnel line item. This is the easiest way, without having to amend the budget and move all this stuff around, to just put, if she had five employees at dollar twenty-five...
Whatever the difference would be for the dollar twenty-five.
Whatever that is, and you do it with, with each department. Because it's not, in the general, we spend all the cash overhead, we have that authority, according to Scott. But, in your, uh, treasurer, if we, we set her budget at, if, if her budget's three hundred thousand dollars, and we approve twenty thousand dollars over that of raises... Then she's gonna be twenty thousand dollars into the red, and that's, that's not, that's gonna be a, uh, budget violation.
So you pull from the general fund and put it...
You don't even have to pull it, you don't have to put it anywhere.
You just spell it out in there, I gotcha.
You just create that in the general, and then they just cut the check out of that.
So you're not actually transferring funds to a different, I gotcha.
For things in the general.
Yeah.
The ones outside of there, there was a different, um... Yeah, so, if you look on the six A, this is the general fund, and if you go down to the bottom, it says employee compensation, so there's a line in for three hundred thousand.
Okay.
So, the majority of it comes out of that, but with the overages, that's where we're having to make the adjustments.
And I apologize, I didn't get ahold of Scott last week, I didn't, I didn't talk to him, so...
I feel like we have the homework to do, but I feel like we need to take this, and then Michelle, if you could send us the CIC report that shows the line items breakdown, I think that would be beneficial.
And I will make you copy this, but I can also maybe forward this email, this was his explanation back to me.
Perfect.
And then, we, we can set another time to discuss with him.
Yeah.
I did have one other question though.
Just blame it on me, you see, the new guy's slow, and we can't get this done.
It's fine, but in your new salary schedule, it doesn't show the elected officials increase. So I think that, if you look at Michelle's and Laura's and Linda's, their amount isn't in there.
Oh.
It's the old amount. their amount isn't in there. It's the old amount.
Yeah. You sure this is the thing that we're doing? You go through a lot of them. Probably do what I did.
Tanya's, Tanya's is correct, so that one's good, and I was gonna look at.
Michelle, you have separate. Look at the dedication. Oh, man.
You have to remember where you're looking, cause I see.
Oh. Yeah, so Chris's, Chris's is. So Chris's is correct and Tanya's, but yours and Laura's and Linda's.
Did you review the bills at all?
I looked at these.
I think it didn't like.
These here? No. That's great. Earlier on, Heather pointed out one that was weird, that was, looked like it was old. Something about a fire extinguisher or something somewhere. And that was weird.
The fires, the one where they come, um, not review them, but inspect them?
Yeah, apparently, but it was like a different location, it was like old, a couple of years old.
Okay.
I don't know where, where that was happened.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions on the bills. On this, so we are going to... I'll give, I'll send you this email. So we'll put it on for next week, if we can set a time where Scott's available, and then...
And I'll talk to you.
You're wanting Michelle to print.
No, I want her to send it to you digitally.
Yes, and it's a report for.
The CIC report that shows the line items that you're gonna be working in.
Okay.
It's gonna be easier when you view them that way than, as opposed to.
Just funds with no numbers.
And then.
Exactly.
Got you.
Can.
You're gonna see actual fund totals and whatnot.
And, and I apologize again, I didn't call the guy, I didn't talk, I didn't get a chance to talk to him, so that's my fault. I know, my bad.
Well, just this once.
Yeah. No candy for you.
Yeah, you're cut off on a little bit.
I had a couple, are we to the bills?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I had a couple of questions. One thing I visited with Michelle, there was a duplicate on ambulance services, so we're just taking that out.
Perfect.
Um, and so, on the one sheet, that's the two-page one, you're just gonna scratch the ambulance line, that's just gonna be the general fund line, that four and three. Um, and then I also visited with her, and her and I both have some questions for CIC. They renewed our, would we say contract or, they just sent us the bill essentially. So, I had went through it because I had a couple of questions about the website, because CIC used to provide our website, but we moved to a different vendor a couple of years ago. But in the new bill, they're still charging us for the website.
Oh.
And then she had also, and I had circled it, she had also brought up like Time Clock Plus. So with ADP, they have a similar service and when we moved to ADP, we chose to use theirs. Cause there was an option, we could stay with Time Clock Plus or move to theirs. So they're also charging us for Time Clock Plus. And she also asked about the employee portal. So, she was, if I understand right, she was gonna reach out to them about a couple of other line items and if these are duplicates or things that we're not gonna be using going forward.
Perfect.
We need those taken off and a new invoice sent essentially, so.
I would agree with that.
The rest of these, I'm not sure. Well, there's another employee portal actually, I'll circle that. So, those were the ones I had, the website, the rest of these.
So how does that change the total?
Well, one was, I'm not sure exactly, because I've got mine circled, but she may have a couple of other questions of things that she knows what items are used for that I don't, that she may say, hey, I don't think we're using that either. So.
So can we just like not pay CIC?
Yeah, you could kick that one out, and you could approve a contingent on the question being answered.
I circled four, but you may have others on there. So I don't know if we wanna remove this in total, that amount?
Well, that's what that, what that changes in total. But like I said, you can also approve it contingent on the questions being answered and make the issue a new total, or just pull that one out. What is the total of that bill?
This one is fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty, and the items that I've circled so far are twenty-four hundred dollars, ninety dollars, about sixteen hundred dollars and another fifty-five. And then there may be items that she has.
So, I'd almost just like not, I'd just ask them for a new invoice almost. To clean it up, is what my opinion would be, on that CIC invoice statement.
Would you be comfortable if we took that one out and you reach out and ask them about those items? And then if you see anything else that you think we're not gonna use, ask them to remove those and issue a new invoice? I would feel more comfortable with that.
What's the total? Fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty, two, eight, eight, six, seven, five, ten.
So that was one item. And then.
You just get some math on that, did you? Glasses?
What are these days? I'm not rushing. That is a grand total of two, three, three, six, eight, five, point one oh.
Okay.
Yes, and I do have one more question. This is much smaller, but, um... What he was talking about earlier. There's a really old bill, and I, Brent was in here today, so I asked him about it. He wasn't sure how to answer it, but it is from July twenty-three and it's for fire extinguishers, which I think we probably do have those bills. But they addressed it to Osage County Economic Development at one thirty-one West Fourteenth, which I think is where they used to be at the sheriff's office maybe? Does that sound right? Well, it has one thirty-one West Fourteenth, but it came out of the economic development budget, and I don't think that that's her bill.
Wow, yeah.
It's, they go each fire extinguisher, whatever office, but it's in.
Well, they billed this to a site that isn't the economic development office.
They just don't have the addresses on their records, but we don't use them anymore.
Ah.
And it's from July twenty-three. Do you think maybe we've paid this?
No, I don't think so. Have been overlooked.
Ah. Paying a protest? PUP.
I mean, tech electronics usually is really good, they used to be professional firearm systems, but we could call over there and find out what's going on.
Well, it, well then, the site they're showing is one thirty-one West Fourteenth, which I believe is the sheriff's office, so then would it need to be, I actually think it might be the same room where, uh, the emergency management's at, but should it be shifted to that department since?
They have a bill for their own department though.
Well, then they might have double billed us because they're billing us for a room.
That bill is tiny.
Yeah, it's a hundred and sixty, uh, a hundred and sixty-four dollars. But it wouldn't have.
It's.
It's per extinguisher though. Like I get one with my offices, I have one in there, treasurer needs one, he needs one there.
One forty-one Fourteenth Street doesn't even exist. I mean, it does or it don't. It's on the middle of a road.
So, but is the date on that, correct?
So.
What's the address of?
Yeah, because when the last payment was posted was here, that's why it has names on it.
So it's, it's billed to us in this address.
Yes.
Site that they're billing us for.
Yes.
Is one thirty-one West Fourteenth Street. And since it says.
It's the sheriff's office.
It says Osage County Economic Development. Well, that was up there years ago, so I'm wondering if we're getting, they maybe had not updated their records, so we might be being double billed because they would have already billed the sheriff's office for theirs.
But it was from two thousand twenty-three?
Three.
Yeah, I'm, we just need to call them and find out what's going on.
Ask them to double check their.
And ask why they're, and it's probably a bill we didn't pay, probably because of the same discussion, we probably said, oh, we don't even have it again. And it just got overlooked and didn't get paid, fits in twenty-three.
Well, probably.
Hundred and sixty-seven dollars, I say, let's make a quick phone call and let's say, hey, we got this one bill, we need to update.
Cause I think this would have been included in the sheriff's one.
Let's.
Since it's in their building.
Yeah.
And their, their records are just old, and so they were billing probably.
All the people's names on that stuff's probably changed since then.
Tech electronics a lot and odds are that bill is correct and it didn't get paid.
Yeah.
That's good odds.
Yeah.
I'd say we could make a phone call. Do you mind making that phone call, Michelle, just to confirm that? You wanna deduct that one out of the?
So it's one sixty-four.
Well, we'll prove that one.
We're gonna end up, I almost guarantee you're gonna end up paying it.
Yeah.
I mean, probably.
We just need to make sure in that conversation that we update that and say, hey.
We don't have that office.
We do not have Osage Economic Development up there, and maybe they need to be privy to the people that are running around using Osage Economic Development. Because that needs to be kicked out to God and everybody, just because we get confused every year.
Yeah.
Last year we got bills and collections, cause there was a group running around using that same name.
Really?
That was affiliated with the county. How it's not illegal, I don't know. And we went through that and no one could tell us that that was illegal. Should have been. Anyway, did we see anything else in there? That, where everything up? I've got the new total for the first batch, excuse me, at two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-five, ten. Did your math concur with that?
That's what I masked, but.
We pulled out the CIC bill, we just pulled the total.
Okay.
And then Michelle, can I ask them to, uh, deduct those due and redo the invoice?
So what'd you come up with? You said two?
Two thirty-three, six, eight, five, point one oh.
Okay.
And we are striking the ambulance, uh, line, one forty-three, from the second set, page two of two. Uh, for a grand total on that bill of four hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And then on the third set, there were no changes, correct? So that total is forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. I will need a motion to pay them off.
From what I can tell, that all.
I don't know if you guys have seen the third, did you get the third report though?
For the.
The third report's in here, but I don't know if it was one of these. Cause there's a different one. Oh, I know, I did circle another one. Well, so there's three binders, and the two that we approved go with these two binders, and then there was a third binder.
I'm looking at your report right here, correct? That's forty-eight thousand, seven, seven.
Got the hams?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that one.
Yeah, I got one.
You have one that says forty?
I got, I got that.
You got the same thing, yeah.
Did you, did you still have theirs?
I did not. I'm not in the habit of stealing.
I did have a question though, and I was looking back at their invoice. KAC as for membership was forty-three hundred dollars. Is that what we pay to be in KAC? I do not remember it being that much.
We really do have this, because we are all just like, are you kidding me?
I, yeah, I didn't see that, and I was like, what in the world? And, yes. I just, I guess that's what the fees are. I did not remember that, so.
So you shouldn't be milking them for stuff.
Well, they, they are a great resource in a lot of things, and I like a lot of the educational things they put on, and I like the conferences, so it's one of those things. I just did not remember that amount.
They're a mouse piece for counties too.
Yeah, up at the state house.
They're able to be, they're hobnobbing rebel moves.
The hard part is, is a lot of, a lot of their stances really don't align with mine, so that's the hard part, but they are a great resource.
Yeah.
And provide a lot of educational things. And they have legal counsel, like Jay Hall is really, he's very available if you reach out for things.
And they got contacts for other people that are, you know, county's our size and not, we don't always have to compare ourselves to Johnson or Shawnee or something.
Yep. I think she wants us to sign these. Yeah, see, she put the sign here.
Alright.
Okay, well, I already outlined the motion, I just need someone to make it.
I will make that motion with the corrected totals.
And I'll need a second.
Uh, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
I need a direct.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Sorry.
I was just hoping you'd stamp it for me. Give me your.
I'm in a cross opportunity.
Yep. Two, three, three, comma, six, eight, five, period, one, zero.
So motion's made and seconded, did we vote?
Yep. I'd said to all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Alright. With that being said. I shouldn't go messing with Heather. I just try to keep it light, with all friends. You can't move to the, it's Heather's job. Actually, do, how does that work? Do you stick with the second and then he adopts the Jay spot, or does it flow to you? Where now you get to make a motion.
I, I think we do what's organic, we just do what we feel at the right time.
You just wanna make something organic, we just wanna direct organic growth, that's.
Yeah.
Organic tomatoes are the best.
Like free range tomatoes?
Right. People say organic. As opposed to eating organic.
Plastic tomatoes are no good.
Excuse me.
And the plastic apples are really bad. You know, Brandon, instead of handing these down to you, I'm just gonna get out of your way after you make the next motion, which is to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Ayes.
I oppose. Motion carries.
You sure the ayes had it, sir?
Ayes had it.